Okay, I think we're ready to go. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to meeting the Village of Royal Palm Beach Council for October the 17th, 2024. It is 6:30 PM. If you all would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Diane, please show that all members of the council are present, with the exception of Mayor Pinto, whose seat remains vacant as a result of his passing.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
So let's begin this evening. The first item on the agenda is reports. Let me start to my left. Jan, would you like to begin?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everybody here. The first thing I'd like to mention is that, a little PSA for our team here, that we have ethics training on October 31st in the city of Lake Worth from 8:00 to 12:00. Then I participate on the Florida League of Cities Utilities, Natural Resources, and Public Works Committee, and we had our first of three meetings this past week. And what they do in the first meeting is just introduce the potential priority and policy issues. So the first one's on utility enterprise funds transfers and restrictions to extraterritorial surcharges. The second one is state parks, and the third one is comprehensive waste and recycling plan. So we learned about the issues as they are. The next meeting we'll go into will be about the committee really solidifying which two we're going to go forward, one with as a priority and the other one as a policy. So more on that to follow. And then I just got word from the Florida League of Cities that I have been appointed to the federal Action Strike Team by President Blake. And so this will be an opportunity to focus on grassroots activities and help shape federal municipal policy. We'll be able to work with our representatives here locally, and then in February, we do a fly-in and do some of that work. So it's kind of fun. The National League of Cities Annual Conference, celebrating its 100 years, is in Tampa on the 13th to the 16th. And a couple of those top issues that they have announced are building the preemption toolbox, housing strategies and homeless, and climate-ready futures. So that's going to be a very interesting conference. And then for those of you who had already volunteered for read for the record, we are going to read next week on the 24th. Very exciting. And then the last thing to report is it's been confirmed that our Shakespeare Festival will take place January 30th to February 2nd. It's the fifth annual Shakespeare and by the palms, and the play will be As You Like It. So, thank you.
Well, that's fantastic. The weather will be much more accommodating at that time.
Yes.
But that's great. It's surprising it's a fifth one. I can hardly believe that. It's fantastic. Rich?
I don't really have a report, but I'd just like to remind everyone, in just a few weeks, we have an election. Since I ran my voter registration drive in Miramar High School back in 1988, I've been telling people, make sure you get out, make sure you get your voice heard, and I encourage everyone to do so. Thank you.
Selena?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for all of their work during the hurricanes, the two that we had coming through. So they did an amazing job of notifying all of us of everything, as well as our residents. So thank you very much. We have a food truck and concert tomorrow night over Commons Park from 7:00 to 9:00. The band is live in Technicolor, which is a Coldplay tribute band. We have a senior prom, which is a Halloween party on Thursday, the 31st, over at the Rec Center from noon to 2:30, and it is $10 to attend. Veterans Day Celebration is Monday, November 11th, over at the Cultural Center. That's from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and it's free to attend. And then the Royal Palm Beach Community Band is performing on October 29th over at the Cultural Center at 7:00 PM. Through the Parks and Rec Department, we had three grants that we applied for. One is for Commons Park, and it's for the all-play addition that we're going to do to one of those over there. So that'll be, the grant was applied for. And then one over Preservation Park, which is the early childhood playground as well. So each of those are a matching grant for $200,000. And then the third one is for Cat Soccer Complex. So that one's quite a bit that we applied for, for that one. And finally, I would like to thank the Indian Trail Improvement District and Congressman Brian Mass for coming down into the area to listen to residents, everything that they had that went on during the hurricanes, and just still some issues that people are going through with that. So thank him very much. And with that, I would like to make a recommendation, if we could ask staff to coordinate with FEMA, to possibly using one of our facilities as a temporary site to help the Western communities.
Okay.
Consensus, because that sounds like a good idea.
Thanks. Do you need anything else from us?
You have it.
No, that's good. We did get with Mary Blakely with the County EOC. She called earlier in the week, and we told them if they want to come out and take a look at the David B. Farber Center and get an idea, and I'd be looking to get an authorization from the council to do a use agreement with them. And I am considering doing it at no cost. I think they want to use it for a minimum of 30 days, maybe a little bit longer. We do have a project to modify that building, but we won't need it for another 120 days. So that will work out, I think, really well.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds good.
And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So as we've been talking about the tornado that came through our general area, I think we all appreciate that by virtue of a half a mile further east, our experiences and our stories would be a lot different. So I know all of our prayers and thoughts go out to Wellington, to Loxatch Grove, to the acreage, and to Palm Beach Gardens as well. The tragedy is really even hard to wrap your mind around when you see the destruction in these areas. Community cleanup efforts, though, is a remarkable indication of community coming together to help one another out. And of course, part of the challenge is to remember that it's not over just because a week's gone by and people have helped. It takes a much, much longer period of time than that. So hopefully, we'll all put on our calendars to make sure that we're checking in to see if there's anything else we can do to help our neighbors recover from this. I wanted to mention that, on a brighter note, and it always is, the Education Advisory Board meeting in October, this time it showcased Cypress Trails Elementary School. Always a good crowd whenever the kids are here. And the kids were here, and they were participating by doing part of the presentation. What they were talking about was something called the Ron Clark Academy House System. And if you've ever watched Harry Potter, then you know what the houses are. And the idea here is to put together a set of houses, in fact, there are four. I might even try the names here. One is Protos, another is Nukamori, another is Anraka, and the other is Solivari. Anyway, those four houses have members from the entire student body that actually come together, collaborate, and actually compete with one another. And they compete with things like grades, they compete with things like service. It's just a great inside-the-school kind of a community activity. And if you were here for that board meeting or you watched it, you could feel the energy, and you could feel the sense of community that's built by having something like that. We're very fortunate, you know, our principals throughout our schools here in Royal Palm Beach are extraordinary. Bruce Selter, actually, is the principal and has been the principal for six years over at Cypress Trails. He is a lifelong Royal Palm Beach resident. Well, he not only brings a lot of professional educational talent, but he also brings that creativity that brought to us the Ron Clark Academy. He has, in his six-year period of time that he's been there, actually added 110 students to the student body, which is now 553 students strong. And it is the only Title I school in the district to be A-rated for the last seven years. So congratulations to Principal Selter and to find Cypress Trails Elementary School. Jan was talking about the Florida League of Cities Legislative Committees. There are five of those committees. The one I'm on, I think, is a catch-all committee. It is intergovernmental relations, mobility, and emergency management. Now, there aren't too many other things that you couldn't find a home for in that group. So our first discussion was, as Jan said, was about kind of familiarizing us with some likely issues, maybe issues that have come up in the past. This next time around, we will settle on a set of one or two priority issues. It is likely that they will be transportation-related. And in fact, one of the discussions that we had was around a topic that comes up again and again and again, and that is the declining gas tax. You know, the gas taxes in the state and from a federal side actually go to maintaining our roads. And as we have more and more electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles, we have less and less gas tax revenue. So last year, I think actually for the last two years, Senator Hooper had actually sponsored a bill that would require an additional fee for electric vehicles and also for hybrid vehicles. For electric vehicles, it'd be between $200 and $250 a year. For hybrid vehicles, it'd be between 50 and 100. The bills have not gotten traction, but like in a lot of issues like this, which are serious issues, it takes time. It also takes position. So Senator Hooper's incoming Appropriations Chair this year. So this may have a chance of actually getting some traction, so we probably want to watch that. And then countywide transportation plan initiative, some of you all have heard about that. We've talked about it a little bit, and it is something that, again, is of huge benefit in many ways to the county potentially. The fact that the county, the cities, special taxing districts, school district are all coming together to deal with something that is truly a cross-cutting, multi-jurisdictional issue is a excellent thing. We have an executive committee, I'm a member of that. We have an issues forum, and Jan is a member of that, that will be working together to move this initiative forward. The County Board of County Commissioners is in support of it, and the League of Cities is in support of it. So it's an important effort, and simply said, it's a matter of bringing together all of our individual plans for transportation in an integrated fashion to try to optimize the mix of those plans. So we're spending our money in a way that makes sense, not doing things out of sequence or failing to benefit from doing them in the right order. And then combining with land use planning. This is the first time that I know of, anyway, that we have done anything like this in the county. Bringing those two things together and bringing all of those organizations together is not only challenging, but has tremendous potential benefit. So we're looking forward to a meeting, I think that's coming up for the issues forum on the 31st, and for the executive committee on the 29th, and we'll keep you posted on that. We already talked about Veterans Day, ethics training, you mentioned, and the election was mentioned. One last thing I want to mention is with regard to our former mayor, Fred Pinto, he will actually be interred at the South Florida National Cemetery on Friday, October the 18th. I believe it's at 10 o'clock. The American Legion and an active-duty contingent will perform military honors, and everyone is invited to attend. So that completes my report. With that done, then, I would ask if there are any petitions to be presented to the village council this evening. Okay, not seeing any. Then we'll move on to opening the floor for public comment on non-agenda items and consent agenda items. I have a comment card on a non-agenda item. Mr. Trevor Darlington?
Yes, sir.
Would you, there you are. Okay. Would you like to come up? Good evening, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you probably need to move the mic closer to you.
Trevor, I've talked a lot enough. I've been doing training for years, so I can talk pretty elevated.
Well, it's a matter of recording it, too. Is the green light on?
Yeah, the green light is on, though.
Great. Okay, fantastic. Welcome.
I sent the, I gave you item. It was just there. I had a meeting this afternoon with the city, the city manager, city manager, my bad. And he's addressing the situation, so I just had to submit additional documentation here to the council for reasons purposes, contractual notification. But he's addressing it, taking care of it. We had a very fruitful conversation this afternoon.
Well, that's fantastic.
He's addressing those concerns.
Well, we appreciate you engaging with him, and I definitely always appreciate the kind of work that Ray does, to try to resolve issues for us. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Are there any other comments from the public on non-agenda or consent agenda items? Diane, do we have any other cards?
No, no vice mayor.
Ray, are there any hands raised?
No, there's no hands raised.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment on any consent agenda item or non-agenda item at this time? Okay, not seeing any indications of that. I will close the floor to public comment, and we will now move on to the consent agenda. Diane, would you please read the consent agenda into the record?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Number one, approval of the amendments to the first public budget hearing of September 12, 2024, final public budget hearing of September 19, 2024, and council regular meeting of September 19, 2024. Two, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a professional services agreement renewal for lobbyist services with Ronald L. Book, PA. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the consent to assignment of agreement in order to assign the current agreement with First Fire and Security Incorporated to Summit Fire and Security LLC in accordance with Section 12 of the agreement. Four, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the second addendum to agreement for security and fire, alarm monitoring, inspection, and service labor in order to extend the current agreement with Summit Fire and Security LLC pursuant to Section 1 of the agreement and reflect the CPUU price increase in accordance with Section 4 of the agreement. Five, authorization to reject all bids received and open at 3:00 PM on Thursday, September 12, 2024, for license plate recognition, LPR, systems, maintenance, and support. Six, authorization to reject all bids received and opened at 3:30 PM on Thursday, September 12, 2024, for surveillance, camera, systems, maintenance, and support. Seven, adoption of Resolution 2425, a resolution of the village council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing in accordance with established policy the making of a budget amendment for Fund 401 in the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget. Set amendment to transfer total of $509,475 from Fund 401 undesignated fund balance to WTP Site Modifications, PW1902. Eight, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a contract with Total Wrecking and Environmental LLC, the lowest responsible responsive bidder for the demolition of the water treatment plant, Site Modifications Project, CIP, PW1902, in an amount not to exceed $1,033,448, and 75 days to substantially complete the work. Nine, requesting correction of a shivener's error in the previously approved bid award amount to reflect the correct amount of $306,000 as reflected in the contract executed by the village manager with Johnson Davis Incorporated, the highest-ranked bidder for Sycamore Drainage Repair Project. Funds to come from the Sycamore Drainage Repair Project, Project Number SW2401. Ten, approval of a special event permit for Mission BBQ Company to hold a Veterans Day Celebration honoring our local heroes. Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, Palm Beach County Fire and Rescue, and active-duty military and veterans at a Mission BBQ restaurant located at 11929 Southern Boulevard. The event will take place during business hours on November 11, 2024. Eleven, authorization for the village manager to execute the first addendum to agreement for air conditioning monthly maintenance services with Horizon Air Conditioning Incorporated to extend the agreement for the first one-year renewal period and reflect a 3% price increase. The adjusted annual amount of the agreement for fiscal year '25 is $87,335.76. Funding for the AC monthly maintenance is budgeted in the fiscal year '25 Public Works operating budget. Twelve, authorization for the village manager to execute the first addendum to the agreement for aquatic vegetation maintenance services with Aquatic Vegetation Control Incorporated to extend for the final one-year renewal period under the existing terms. Funding for the agreement for aquatic vegetation maintenance services is budgeted in the Stormwater Utility Fund. Thirteen, authorization for the village manager to execute the first addendum to the agreement for Village Hall Custodial Services with Clean Space Incorporated to extend for the first one-year renewal period under the existing terms. Funding for the agreement for custodial services is budgeted in the Public Works operating budget. Fourteen, authorization for the village manager to execute the second addendum to agreement for roadway grounds maintenance service with Epicurean Park LLC, doing business as Next Era Services, to extend the agreement for the second one-year renewal period and reflect a 3% price increase. The adjusted annual amount of the agreement for fiscal year '25 is $433,659.22. Funding for roadway grounds maintenance is budgeted in the fiscal year '25 Public Works operating budget.
Great, thank you, Diane. I'll turn to fellow members of the council. Does anyone wish to pull any of the consent agenda items? Okay.
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. All right. Then we can move on to the regular agenda. And we have nine items this evening on the regular agenda. Some are quasi-judicial, so there's some work for the attorney to do. We will take each one in order. The first regular agenda item is a particularly special one, I think, and a really, really important one. It is a public hearing and first reading to consider the ordinance number 1053, providing for the Village of Royal Palm Beach's continued inclusion in the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Municipal Service Taxing Unit, MSTU, for the provision of fire protection, fire rescue, advanced life support, or similar emergency services, fire code enforcement, and other necessary and incidental services. I'm going to turn to the attorney and ask, if you would, please present that.
Thank you, sir. I need to read it by title, and then either IRA will give you an overview of it. As you said, it's ordinance number 1053. It's an ordinance of the village council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 10 Finance and Taxation at Article 8, Inclusion of Village's Boundaries Into Palm Beach County's Fire Rescue Municipal Service Taxing Unit, MSTU, at Section 10-111, to provide for the village's consent to the inclusion of the entire territory within the Village of Royal Palm Beach's municipal boundaries into Palm Beach County's Fire Rescue Municipal Service Taxing Unit for the fire rescue, fire protection, advanced life support, or similar emergency services, fire code enforcement, and other necessary and incidental services, providing for intent, purpose, consent, and duration, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability and codification, providing for an effective date, and acknowledging limitations on ad valorem millage rate for municipal purposes. Ray, do you want to handle this one, or you want?
Sure, I can handle it.
So this is another decade of fire management. This will be our third decade with them, and it'll, we have completed about 26 years of service with them. In 1998, we started a service with the fire department and did away with the Royal Palm Beach Fire Department. They actually merged with Palm Beach County Fire Rescue in '98. We did it under contract until 2005. In 2005, we entered into the MSTU, and we've, this December, we've completed our second 10-year agreement, and this will start our third 10-year agreement with Fire Rescue. We are pleased We are pleased with the service, the stations. We did sell the stations to them in this last 10-year agreement. They have assumed them and maintain them, and we're pleased with the service, and we're glad to have them as our fire rescue team.
Great, thank you, Ray. Let me add to that and just say that, you know, today does mark a significant milestone for us. It establishes a continuing partnership that we've had, and as Ray said, we are more than satisfied. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue has consistently gone above and beyond to protect our community, responding swiftly to emergencies and providing invaluable medical care and fire protection. This relationship has allowed our village to benefit from advanced resources. We talked a little bit about that a while ago. Technology and expertise which ensures the well-being of our citizens. So, as we extend this partnership, we acknowledge the shared commitment to maintaining the highest standards of public safety. On behalf of the village, I want to express our gratitude, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, for their dedication, professionalism, and continued service to Royal Palm Beach. Together, we will continue to build a safer and stronger community for everyone, and we are very fortunate to have such an august group with us tonight, led by Fire Chief, the Chief of Palm Beach County Fire and Rescue, Chief Kennedy. Would you like to come up and say a few words, sir?
My honor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, council staff, Manager Liggins, just, I can't say from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you for your trust in us. Thinking about how I started my career in 1996, I do remember when Royal Palm came into the system, and I just, I know now that we've grown together in a relationship, and I know now that the resources that we can provide throughout the county, everybody's stronger for it. So, knowing that you trust us with that, I just, I want to say thank you. It's truly an honor. And I thank Chief Ramero for being here and just always keeping me plugged in in the business. I know I don't get to see you guys that often, but 25 years, greater than 25 years, as mentioned, is just something that is not lost on us, that that relationship and that trust is something that you've embedded into this community for us, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you, Chief Ramero. We appreciate you showing up on a regular basis, as you do. Would you like to say anything?
Yes. I'm not as tall as Chief Kennedy, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to say, over the last year and a half since I took command of Battalion 2, it has been an absolute honor and absolute pleasure to get to know you all, get to know the community better. I truly enjoy serving the Village of Royal Palm, and you guys have been so great, and I look forward to the next 10 years.
Fantastic. Likewise, thank you again. Any of the members of the council wish to say anything? Rich?
I'd just like to thank Fire Rescue personally. I believe it was under the chief's watch, not a little over a year ago, a person in my neighborhood and a friend who also happened to be a sheriff's deputy had a serious medical condition, and, you know, if it wasn't for not only her partner's quick reaction, but you guys getting there and getting her to the hospital, I mean, this was an out-of-the-blue type thing that could have really gone south, and her children just graduated high school with my younger son. I mean, this is an impactful thing, and to know that you guys were there, responded so quickly, and saved her life, she's doing fabulous today. So, I'd like to say that that's my limited experience, but I'm sure there's a lot across the community. I see the fire trucks all the time, so please keep up the good work, and thank you so much.
Anyone else can say anything?
Sure, I'll just say, we are grateful for the collaborative, friendly, working relationship that we have with you, both as council up here, but as residents, and appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you.
Right, Selena?
And very much, very similar to everybody else, but thank you very much for all that you do. I always say that we don't know how much we need you until we actually do need you, and at those times, we are not at our best to say, you know, we understand the way you're handling things, but it is the response and the feedback that I've received from my neighbors that have called you, it is always very professional, very calming, and that's what you need in those situations. So, thank you very much for everything.
Right, thank you again. We really appreciate that. So, let me open it up to the floor for comment on this agenda item. Do we have any, Diane, do we have any cards?
No comments here.
Okay. Ray, do we have any hands raised?
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay, then I'll close the floor to public comment. Any final thoughts or comments from the council? If not, I'll look for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to comment? Come on up. Come on up, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mrs. Pinto, and I'm glad to be here, finally. And I just want to thank all of you for who you are and how you've assisted our family, especially Fire Rescue, and so this is very timing. This is really good timing for me to be here, because Amanda and your team and Chief, is it, give me, the Chiefs, Kennedy, yes, yes. I didn't get to meet you a week ago, and I just want to thank you for everything you did for my husband and all of what you do for this village. And your team was next to me like a friend. I could not believe how they reached out to me, and it just meant so much. And they contacted me every day, they texted me, "Is there anything you need?" I mean, I was like, this is my long-lost family. So, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you and thank all of you as well.
Thank you for the comments. I hope you all get to hear those stories often, and the gratitude that you hear from Danielle and the rest of us. There are, you know, there was a program many, many years ago about New York City that talked about, back then, what is 6 million, 6 million stories in a big city, kind of a thing. Well, there are a lot of stories in Royal Palm Beach. I'm sure that point to gratitude for the service you guys provide, so thank you again for that. All right, now, for business on this, I need a motion and a second.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number one.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the second agenda item is a public quasi-judicial hearing to consider application number 24-035SE, an application by Urban Design Studio and an adoption of Resolution number 24-11, confirming council action. The applicant is seeking a special exception use approval to allow for a 58,731-square-foot integrated care center within an existing building situated within the general commercial CG zoning district for a property located at 450 South State Road 7. So, I'm assuming we go to the attorney first, right?
I do need to swear on the applicant. As you said, this is quasi-judicial, judicial, excuse me. So, I'll swear on the applicant and also staff at this time. Sir, could you state your name for the record so the council knows who you are? Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me? And I see staff has their hand raised. Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and with that, I'll turn back to council and ask for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
Yes, staff and also the applicant.
Staff and the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we turn it over to Bradford.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. As he stated, the applicant is requesting a integrated care center special exception to allow 58,731 square feet. What is a integrated care center? The medical, it consists of medical offices, which include services such as physicians' offices, clinics, ambulatory surgery, outpatient services, diagnostic imaging, laboratory facilities, physical therapy, and offices for medical practitioners. Off-campus emergency department, integrated care, is intended to provide comprehensive emergency services consistent with the main hospital. In reviewing the proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, and conformance with the village's development standards for the general commercial zoning district, more specifically whether the special exception is consistent with the standards of the village's comprehensive plan, complies with development regulations of the village code, does not have adverse environmental impacts, does not have adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts, does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities, does not have adverse impacts on adjacent properties, and is compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, is not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent properties, and the proposed special et cetera will not seriously reduce the air quality or quantity of light and air available to the adjacent properties. If you remember this special exception, the first application that came through to set this special exception up and pave the way for this special exception was a code amendment that was previously passed by council to allow for such use. The Planning Zoning Commission considered this application on September 24, 2024, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Bradford. Would the applicant care to say anything?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. Lindsey Jean-Louis, on behalf of Baptist Health South Florida, Inc., we're very excited to be here before you tonight, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to set the stage on the site plan before digging into each application. So, we are coming before you with an adaptive reuse and rehab of the existing Toys R Us facility. We are also requesting a zoning code variance for reduced drive aisle widths, a zoning code variance for reduced foundation planting, assigned variance, and then the special exception approval that Bradford just walked through. So, just to give locational context, the site is located at the southeast end of State Road 7 in Southern Boulevard, roughly a mile south of Southern Boulevard. We're 4.5 acres with a general commercial zoning designation and a commercial future land use designation. We are within an existing PCD, the Toys R Us and Royal Office Park PCD, which consists of an existing office building, existing furniture store, an existing retail and medical office structure, as well as the existing retail shell that our proposed use is going into. Our site maintains the same access as the existing Toys R Us facility, where our primary access will be off of State Road 7, and we have internal access to the Royal Office Park to the north, as well as the shops at Ela Verde to the south, which is in the Village of Wellington jurisdiction. Our proposed site improvements, again, consist of an adaptive reuse and rehab of the Toys R Us facility. As part of that adaptive reuse and rehab, we're increasing the building's square footage by 390 square feet, which is dedicated to two entry vestibules, one for the medical office portion and one for the integrated, or the off-campus emergency department portion of the building. We are also proposing a 12-foot westerly shift of the drive aisle, and this is to accommodate the necessary pickup and drop-off area for the off-campus emergency department component. And here you just see the breakdown of the existing Royal Office Park PCD and then our subject site. These two sites were combined for the current PCD that we are in at 12.65 acres. And here we can see the current layout of the site. Again, we are on that southern and easternmost boundary of the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Immediately to our south and immediately to our east is the Village of Wellington. And as part of our proposed site improvements, we had to get approval from the village for our proposed trash enclosure, which is in the same area as the prior Toys R Us approval, as well as an additional sidewalk on the east end of the building for building life safety standards. We got this approval from the village June 25, 2024. We also received TPS approval from the county, and we meet traffic performance standards. Since our use consists of medical office and off-campus emergency department uses, these uses are lower traffic generation rates than the existing approved retail use for the Toys R Us. And again, Bradford walked through the components that we are offering as part of our medical office, as well as the components that we're offering as part of our off-campus emergency department. We will have an onsite physician 24 hours of the day, seven days of the week, and there will be dispensing of prescription and non-prescription drugs, but only during the duration of a patient's stay. As part of that code that we came before you in March to approve for the introduction of the integrated care center use, we wrote in supplemental regulations. Our site plan complies with those supplemental regulations in regard to the minimum parcel size and the minimum building size, as well as our setback from the nearest residential structure. We're setback 220 feet from the nearest residential structure, where our code requirement is 100 feet. Additionally, additional miscellaneous requirements as to emergency fleet vehicles were written. Our emergency fleet vehicles that we are providing and the staging for that will not occupy our provided parking spaces, and these vehicles are also oriented away from abutting residentially zoned property. Also, emergency vehicle sirens will be prohibited while onsite. And this is the depiction of where we're proposing our emergency vehicle and service vehicle staging. We are dedicating five spaces along the north end of the building. Again, these spaces are not included in our provided parking count. And the emergency vehicles are intended to access the site on our northernmost driveway, coming off of that main access on 441, and then also exiting on that same northern driveway westward towards 441. For general site data, our emergency department component will consist of 18 beds at roughly 27,000 square feet, with our medical office consisting of roughly 30,000 square feet. We are within an approved parking variance. In 2013, for the site, there was an approved parking variance for 113 spaces as of our proposed use and the required parking calculation as such. We are at a deficit of 43 spaces, but again, this is within the approved variance in 2013 of 113 spaces. And we are parking the medical office portion of the site at the established village medical office use at one per 200 square feet and one space per employee. And the off-campus emergency department component will be parked at the hospital rate at one space per two patient beds plus one space per employee. And here are some images of the proposed building elevations for the west and east and north and south. And as you can see in this image here, the dashed black line depicts the existing envelope and the existing elevation of the Toys R Us. Our proposed rehab and adaptive reuse is actually coming in a few feet shorter than the highest element of the existing Toys R Us building. We have also been in coordination with staff to determine the correct pricing, as well as location for our art in public places. We will have to come before your council again for ultimate approval. We are currently in the process of selecting an artist to eventually come before your board to display that art, and we will have a condition that this art has to be installed and approved prior to certificate of occupancy. And here are just more detailed renderings of what we are proposing for the site. And Bradford was thorough with our special exception request. Again, we wrote it into the integrated care center in the text amendment that we came before you and got approval in March, where this use is permitted as a special exception use in the CG district. And that completes this portion of the presentation.
Okay, council members, have any questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, actually, so we can open it to the public. Any cards, Diane?
There are no cards.
Okay, any hands raised, Ray?
No, Vice Mayor.
Okay, then we'll turn to the council and see if there are any questions or comments that any members of the council would like to make. Okay, so this is one of five agenda items, right? And so, your presentation then provides us with kind of an overview of what we're going to be dealing with item by item. Is that correct?
That's right. This is the first of several applications. This is just the use that you're on right now. So, although he did give you a little bit more detail than just the use, I expect as you get further down in the agenda, he can go back over whatever he just covered as it relates to the other applications, but the one you're on now is just the use itself.
Okay, and so I do have a question. One of the concerns, and we've talked about this over a long period of years, as a matter of fact, has always been the lights and noise. As you think about ambulances... As you think about ambulances, as you think about emergency vehicles, that's one of the things that pops into your head, and yet I know one of the items in the special exception is the impact on the surrounding neighborhood and that kind of thing, and that does not seem to be a problem. Can you talk to that a little bit?
Correct. Again, not only are we limiting the use of sirens onsite, but the general consistency of how often we'll be using emergency vehicles is rather limited. Dawn and Vicki, you guys can confirm, but our anticipated daily intake is, I think, 40 patients, and the estimated amount of those patients that will have to be escorted to an emergency facility is only 10%, so that's roughly four trips. So really, the intention is to limit any negative impacts as far as noise to any surrounding communities.
Okay, so you're responsive to that question, actually triggered another question, which is, this has always been a concern, that when we have a hospital setting up a freestanding or whatever other phrase you might want to use from the emergency department, integrated or not, the concern has always been that if, if a patient had to be hospitalized, how would they actually influence, or how would the choice be made as to what hospital that patient would be brought to?
Correct. Want to speak to it? We have a representative from Baptist Health who can speak to that.
If I could, Mr. Vice Mayor, before she speaks, if I could swear you in, could you state your name for the record? Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead.
Transferring a patient, right? The first one is the condition of the patient. If you're in a real emergency condition, we're going to take you to the nearest hospital that could take care of you. A heart attack, a stroke, something like that, we're going to take you to the nearest hospital that could take care of you. Second would be your choice. If a patient's choice is to go to whichever hospital, we would take him there. And after that, then we would decide the nearest hospital that would want to take the patient according to their condition.
Okay, and I think in our conversations, when we talked about that, one of, one of the points that was made was that this choice is documented, which is to say, there's a positive action that a patient has to take in order to determine whether or not, now this is assuming that they're conscious and, and or...
Correct. That's why, in the first condition, the patient cannot make a choice. The doctor's going to make a choice because clinically, they cannot speak to either having a heart attack or a stroke.
Right.
The patient is not in a condition to make that decision, and we want to take him to the nearest location that could handle their care.
Okay, and then certainly, you know, with our growth here in Royal Palm Beach and the surrounding area, capacity of emergency departments are a serious consideration. And I think any of us, we were talking about great experiences with our fire and rescue. I think we could probably tell a variety of experiences and waiting in emergency rooms and things of that nature. Do you have any, any actual data that suggests that the demand in our area that has, I'm sure, grown, has actually grown to really support the need for this individual standalone emergency department?
Not as far as the specific data, but we know that patients like to be seen and want to be seen within 15 minutes of their, I mean, very close to their home, right? 15, 15 minutes or less. They want to be seen by any, any facility, right? That you could walk from your car and walk right into the emergency room versus a hospital that you have to go to the garage, walk around, and finally get there, and then that we could treat them, you know, and treat them fast and efficiently. Why? Because all we do is emergency patients, right? So we're treating you, the lab is only for that, for those patients that are there, CT, x-ray, MRI, you know, whatever they need. You're, you're it. You're the only customer that we have, that emergency patient.
Okay, all right. Well, any other thing, of course, being part of an integrated facility like that, having access to, to equipment, diagnostic equipment? I think that was a comment that was made. Do you want to comment on that?
We have our own. So inside the suite, you know, inside the emergency room, we have CT, x-ray, ultrasound. We have a complete lab. We have medications. We have, you know, AD physicians, nurses, respiratory techs. We have ventilators. We could deliver a baby if we had to. We don't want to be in that business, but we could take care of just about every need that you have, Abe, within our, our emergency room.
Oh, great. It sounds like, you know, a great resource to have in, in the village. Okay, do you all have any questions? If not, then I will look for a motion and a second, the second agenda, regular agenda item.
Motion to approve regular agenda item two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed? Diane, please show that we have approved this unilaterally. Yeah, so moving on then to the third regular agenda item, which is a quasi, a public quasi judicial hearing to consider variance application number 24-038 VAR, an application by Urban Design Studio to allow variance from section 26-73 C13B, building perimeter plantings. To allow for a reduction in the village code required 5,873 square feet, I guess, of building perimeter plantings to 3,206 square feet of building perimeter planting for a variance of 2,667 square feet for a property located at 450 South State Road Seven. I turn to the attorney.
Thank you, sir. Apologies for the missing foot there in the description. The applicant remains sworn. I'll just ask the council for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
Staff? Okay, so then Bradford, to you.
Great, thank you. As you stated, this is a variance to the required foundation plantings. Village council may grant variances to village code, and now these are the same criteria that will be for the next couple of items on the agenda, so I'm going to just read it once and then just skim over or reference the next two. Special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, building involved, do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. That the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land, will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this division, will not be injurious to the area involved detrimental to the public welfare. Here is a slide, and on this slide, what you're seeing here is you're seeing, A, the property line of this PCD, and also the village's boundaries. So as you can see, the applicant is providing a substantial amount of foundation plantings which are not able to count towards our code requirement. They're in Wellington, Wellington's jurisdiction. We don't have any jurisdiction over that, so some crazy event, they wipe it out, then they have this variance that covers that. And to just make things, shorten things up here, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this application, and staff is recommending approval of this application, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Are there any public comment cards, Diane, on this?
No, Vice Mayor.
And Ray, any hands raised?
No, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Council? Oh, I'm sorry. Applicant?
Thank you Bradford, and I would just like to follow up where, again, we are proposing a total of 11,638 square feet on our building. It's just that we can only count what's applicable to the village boundary, and further, there was an existing variance approval for the same variance on the Toys R Us. We are coming in with actually more perimeter planting than that prior approval, so we're really being thoughtful about the landscape that we're providing. Thank you.
Okay. Council?
More of a comment, that I never liked the words variance, reduction, and planting altogether, but I completely understand why it is that. I appreciate you putting the extra foliage in there, though, and we'll let Wellington monitor it for us, so thank you.
Any other comments from fellow council members?
I just think, excuse me, this is a unique situation where the situation of the property and the fact that overall they are giving more than enough landscape than our code requires, although can't be applied because part of it's in Wellington, it's, it's really an odd parcel that we have, so I would make a motion to approve regular agenda item Marth.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then it passes unanimously. Then we'll move to regular agenda item number four, which is a public quasi-judicial hearing to consider variance application number 24-101 VAR, an application by Urban Design Studio to allow a variance from section 22-51B12.e, parking facility design standards, to allow for a reduction in the required 25-foot drive aisle for three drive aisles, ranging from one foot to 0.6 feet for a property located at 450 South State Road Seven. Turn to the attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Same thing here, the applicant remains sworn. I'll just ask for any council ex parte disclosures.
The same, yes, staff and applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, Bradford?
Great, thank you. As you stated, this is a variance for the reduction in the width of, for three drive aisles from the required 25 feet. This slide here illustrates those three. The north two, the applicant is proposing 24-foot wide drive aisles, a reduction of one foot for each of the drive aisles, and the second is the fifth drive aisle from the north, proposing a 24.4-foot wide drive aisle for a reduction of 0.6 feet. These reduced drive aisle widths are a result of construction that occurred way back, and it's just existing conditions as, as it is built out now. And when the applicant came in for this application, the survey represented these reduced widths in the drive aisles. We had to then, this is basically memorializing that reduction in the drive aisles if approved this evening. Again, this is the variance criteria that I had gone over on the previous application. And based on the information provided, village staff generally agrees with the applicant, and given the error that occurred during the original construction of the site, staff is in support of this applicant or this variance request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this application on, in September 24th, 2024, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you Bradford. The applicant care to say anything?
Thank you Bradford, and I'll just add one item again. These are construction errors that can, these minor errors can accumulate, and as you can see, one of the aisles actually is an increase from that approved 25 feet, so again, we're just inheriting that existing condition from the Toys R Us construction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll open this to the public. Are there any cards, Diane?
No, Vice Mayor.
Hands raised, Ray?
Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the room care to comment? All right, not seeing any comment, I'll turn to the council. Any questions or comments further? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I actually have a question, and Steph, you can answer this. If the variance was given to Toys R Us, why are we, did it not stay with the property? It stayed with the tenant at the time, and that's why we now need to approve it again?
No, it was, it was never, that variance to the drive aisle width was never approved. It was just during construction, those drive aisles width became a little bit narrower than what was approved on the site plan.
That was a, oh whoops, but we're just going to leave it.
Known if they wouldn't have come in for this application.
Thank you.
Yep.
So now the current applicant owns the whoops. Okay, so any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Diane, let it, let the record show that regular agenda item number four was approved unanimously. All right, that brings us then to regular agenda item number five, if I'm tracking correctly. Again, a public quasi-judicial hearing to consider variance application number 24-039 SVAR, an application by Urban Design Studio requesting sign variances from various sections of chapter 20 to allow a larger monument sign, additional wayfinding signs, more than one wall sign on the front facade, wall signage on a building facade not allowed by code, increased square footage for five directional signs, and a larger cabinet sign for a property located on, at 450 South State Road Seven. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Same thing, the applicant remains sworn on this item. I'll just ask for any additional ex parte disclosures from the council.
No additional staff and applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, Bradford?
Great, thank you. As you stated, the applicant is requesting nine deviations, or I'm sorry, 10 deviations from our sign code, and I'll, I'll go through each one of those individually. This, the first one is to section 2060, print one A, to allow for a 10-foot, 6-inch, 63-square-foot entry sign, where village code allows a maximum of seven feet in height and 42 square feet. The next one is to allow for six wayfinding signs, where village code allows for four wayfinding signs, and you can see those wayfinding signs are here in red. Section 2064A to allow three wall signs on the building, where village code allows for only one wall sign, and those signs are here, Baptist Health, the Baptist Health Emergency, and the logo. Section 2064A1 to allow for side wall signage on a corner building to face the exterior of the planned development on the south facade, where village code requires sidewall signage that face interior of a planned development, and that sign is here. Again, the south facade. Section 2064F to allow for a 11.6-square-foot sign area for the front facade, emergency entrance, directional sign, where village code limits it to two square feet. Section 2064F to allow for a 14-square-foot sign where, for the front facade, medical offices, directional sign, where village code limits it to, again, two square feet. And I'm going to use my cursor here, this is the one I'm talking about on this one. 20, section 2064F to allow for a 5.6-square-foot sign on the north facade for ambulance entrance, and this directional sign again is limited to two square feet. Same code for the directional signs. This one is 10 feet, eight, and eight inches high for 10.6 square feet on the north facade for the emergency entrance, again, where village code limits it to two square feet. And then section 2095E to allow for a 53.7-square-foot cabinet sign, where village code allows only 10 square feet. This here is the variance criteria, again. Staff is recommending denial of the request. Village staff feels as though the criteria for granting these variances have not been met. Staff believes that there are no special conditions or circumstances which exist and are not applicable to other lands. Granting the variance will confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands, and the little, literal interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant the rights enjoyed by other lands in the same zoning district. And the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on September 24th, 2024, and recommended approval by a vote of four to one, with Vice Chairman Kamar Williams dissenting. And I know inquiring minds want to know that the Toys R Us had a sign variance prior to Baptist Health wanting to come into town. They got a variance for 459, a 459-square-foot sign, where village code permits only 260 square feet of front wall signage. Baptist Health is proposing 247.2 square feet for a total wall signage 10 feet less than what is allowed by our code for the front wall signage. And the applicant, the question that was posed was, what was the original sign variance request, and how did the applicant work with staff to reduce that request to what the request is before you tonight? request is before you tonight? And so there was two things that the applicant had reduced. So as far as the wayfinding signs are concerned, the applicant originally proposed eight wayfinding signs where this request before you tonight is for six wayfinding signs. And then the applicant also requested four front wall signs, where tonight the applicant is requesting three front wall signs. And with that being, and we are recommending denial based on the strict interpretation of the criteria of our code. And with that being said, Vice Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bradford. I am sure the applicant has something to say.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Bradford. Again, I'll just start off with the sign key map just to walk through first our ground signage on the site, and then I'll go through the sign schedule for our wall signage. As you can see in blue here, we have our entry monument sign for Baptist Health Emergency, which will be ten feet, six inches in height, as Bradford mentioned. We're requesting a heightened square footage variance to that. Our initial sign number two here is for primarily visitors and patients and then emergency personnel that are accessing that main access on that northern drive aisle, where this directs ambulances to continue going straight to access the emergency staging on the north side of the building, while patients and visitors are accessing the site and going to the right to access the emergency department component of the integrated care center as well as the medical office component. As you can see with sign six directing the exit to State Road seven, this allows those accessing the site from the south to be able to have a clear indication of the State Road seven exit without conflict of the circulation going on in this primary drive aisle, especially for the emergency department component in those cases of medical emergencies. Similarly, for those accessing the site from the south, sign seven indicates that the emergency department component and the medical offices are straight ahead, while sign five properly direct patients that the emergency department is immediately to the right, while those ambulances that may enter the site from the south continue going north to the ambulance staging. And then sign eight is from more so within our parking area for those patients and visitors accessing on the southern drive aisle to direct them to the emergency department component and the medical office component, which will be to the left. And one thing to consider is those patients and visitors accessing the site from the north actually have to make a U-turn to access this main northern access for the site. Otherwise, the signalized intersection when accessing the site from the north has a direct turn-in to the Elaverde shops in the Village of Wellington. So in the event of an medical emergency where somebody isn't comfortable making that U-turn and they just want to get in the plaza, there is a high likelihood that visitors will be getting into the site from the south. And to walk through the sign schedule of our wall signage, our first sign here is our Baptist Health identity sign, the emergency sign here. And sign number two is our emergency entrance sign, which specifically directs patients and visitors in medical emergencies to our sliding doors for the emergency department component. Sign number three is another directional sign, again, for the medical office component, and it's crucial to properly distinguish each entrance in the event of a medical crisis. Number four is our second identity wall sign for Baptist Health, consistent with the medical office component of the integrated care center. Sign number five is the pineapple logo, which is consistent with the Baptist Health branding as seen in other Baptist Health locations throughout southeast Florida. It is worth noting that this isn't individual channel letters or an individual sign structure. It's actually an embellishment that's embossed into the architectural features, but in coordination with staff, we added this to our sign variance request and have added it as such. And then sign number six is our Baptist Health identity sign, which faces the south, and it is on our south facade. We also have our directional signage for emergency personnel. Our ambulance entrance-only sign is considered directional sign, and this not only directs those emergency vehicles that stage at the north end of our building, but in the event that a patient or a visitor erroneously gets to the northern end of the building, it properly directs them away from that entrance as that's emergency personnel only. And then we also have our emergencies vertically stacked signage, which is also directional signage, which actually faces this jog out of the building. So emergency personnel going eastward on that northern drive aisle, they see it face on to know where to properly stage. Since we are in a P C D, we did have to consider the existing signage on the site, so included in our signage program is the Royal Office Park Monument Sign. And this is the typical detail for our vehicular wayfinding signs. Although we're asking for a variance to the quantity, each sign individually meets sign requirements per code. So I'll go through each variance request specifically just to supplement Bradford's presentation. Again, our first variance request is to our entry monument sign to add three feet and six inches in height and twenty-one-square-foot increase in sign area. And we just want to ensure proper visibility for those accessing the site from State Road seven, sort of higher-speed thoroughfare, to be able to properly identify the site in a medical emergency. It's currently bisected by the E-one canal, and that distance might pose that additional challenge for those trying to access the site. Variance number two is for the amount of vehicular wayfinding signs. Code prescribes that we're allowed one per building in the P C D, and there's four buildings. We're requesting six, which is an increase of two vehicular wayfinding signs. And again, as I walked through, each sign does have its specific rationale as to how we want to properly direct patients and visitors in the site. Variance number three is for the quantity of front wall signage. Code allows only one for each business conducted on the premises. We're requesting a total of three, and it's important to consider that although we're, one business has Baptist Health, this integrated care center use functions as two separate subuses with the emergency department component and the medical office component. And then further, within the medical office, you have multiple medical office practitioners. So here we have the total dimension of the three wall signs that we're requesting. And again, as Bradford mentioned, not only are the collective of the three signs are ten feet less than otherwise required by code if we were to just do one sign, but again, the prior Toys R Us approval did request variance over this allowed sign area. Our fourth variance is to allow sidewall signage on the exterior of a P C D. Again, we have a unique condition where directly to the south of our site is another shopping closet where we have cross-access. And again, we'll have people potentially accessing the site from the south, so we want to make sure that there's proper visibility in a medical emergency. Similarly to the front wall signage, the signage that we're proposing on this south facade is considerably less than what would otherwise be required with the one-square-foot per linear foot of facade allowance. Variances number five, six, seven, eight, and nine are all in regards to what's considered directional signage, where code prescribes that as directional signage to parking, entrances to the facilities, et cetera. And these are mainly two size dimensional requirements as for a directional sign, you're limited to two square feet in height and max, and then two square feet overall sign area. We are requesting a variance to that size for the emergency entrance signage immediately above those sliding doors for the emergency department component, the medical office signage above the medical office component, the ambulance entrance only sign for those emergency personnel accessing the site off of the north side of the building. And then this vertical emergency stack, as you can see, if I can zoom in a bit here, with it facing directly as emergency personnel are accessing the site on that northern drive aisle. Again, we feel that with that two-square-foot limit in sign area would be challenging to have the proper visibility for those to properly circulate and access the site in that medical emergency. And lastly, and then variance number nine is to the amount of directional signs permitted. Code prescribes that we're permitted two per pre-standing building. We're requesting four, but again, I want to reiterate that this is a use that consists of two separate functions with the emergency department component and the medical office component. And our final signage request is, or signage variance request is to the area for a, what's considered a box or cabinet sign, where any sign, the face of which is enclosed, bordered within a box-like structure, frame, or other device, this is limited to ten square feet. We're requesting fifty-three-point-seven square feet. But again, this isn't an actual individual channel letter sign or has a structure, it's an architectural embellishment consistent with the Baptist branding throughout southeast Florida, and then framing that architectural portion of the building. So that concludes our signage variance request, and we're definitely available to answer any questions. I have our Baptist team here and our Urban Design team.
Okay, let me open it up first to the public, see if there are any comments. Are there any cards signed?
No, Vice Mayor.
Any hands raised, Ray?
No, Vice Mayor.
Would anyone care to comment from the public? Okay, if not, then I'll turn to the council. See if there are any comments or questions.
Okay, I'll start. Lots of presentation, lots of, lots of signs to talk about. Can we talk first about the monument sign? The ten-foot height, how does, how does the sign compare to Wellington Regional Hospital?
Correct. So the Wellington Regional Hospital, the entrance off of Forest Hill actually does have a similar ten-to-twelve-feet height. We don't have the exact dimension of that, but Wellington Regional, if compared to this code, would have to request a similar variance at that height. And similarly, Palms West, while not having the same height as a considerable width, and it's a much larger sign than what we're proposing here, so it is rather consistent with the other emergency department uses in the western communities.
Right, thank you for that.
Question regarding the monument sign, do you mind if I piggyback on you real quick?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, maybe we should do like that, just take each sign.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead.
The sign with the height extension, that's because the logo is higher up, which I understand. If that were in the body of the monument sign itself, that brings it down a little lower, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that element, the top of that element is to the pineapple logo, which slightly exceeds that.
And see, instead of just dropping it down a little bit. The other question I have, and I don't know with our code, Bradford, is, because I see the way you have it, it's facing westward, so you'll see it head-on when you turn into the building. Why wouldn't you turn at forty-five degrees so I can see it if I'm heading from the north or the south? And then does that count as an extra monument sign if you have lettering on both sides?
No, if it was oriented perpendicular to State Road seven, it would still be considered one sign, but with, that sign could have two faces on it. But I think that it, whenever you're, whenever you have a, a sign in this particular location and site configurations, it's, it's one of those things where it's six one-way, half-a-dozen the other. Do you want people, because you're, there's gonna be a certain point in time on the approach to this sign that you will be able to see it and read it. And then whenever you are turning in, you're going to be able to see it, and you're not gonna see the side of a sign. So then it'll be more apparent of where, where you're headed, and that would be into the Baptist Health, Baptist Health property. And same, same difference coming from the north. But now if it was perpendicular, you would see it on the approach, you wouldn't see it as you're entering into the site and on both sides.
That's what I think is, especially when you had mentioned the speed of the traffic on State Road seven. If it's parallel to State Road seven, I can't see it. But if it's perpendicular, I can see it from the distance, especially at seven feet. And if you can put lettering on both sides, now it doesn't matter if I'm traveling north or south, I'll be able to see it on the side instead of as I turn in and now I'm looking at it straight. So that's one of the things is, when you talk about directional signs and things like that, it doesn't help me if I'm a hundred yards away if it's facing perpendicular and I can't see it. So as a suggestion on that side of it. And then the other question is, are they illuminated, or are they solid letters?
My understanding is these are illuminated, correct?
It will be illuminated, okay.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Okay, Rich, did you have anything you wanted to?
Not on, not on the monument sign. I don't, I mean, I guess I'll defer, as Bradford said, you know, six of one, half-a-dozen of another. I mean, I understand Selena's point is, you know, you're heading north, you're looking for the emergency room, you want to see it facing you as you're heading north, but, you know, once you turn and get in there, I don't know that that's gonna be helpful to direct you in which part. So I guess you guys made that decision and probably know what's, what's better or what works more, but I do share, Selena's concern.
The side of it, and if that's what I'm looking at as I'm driving north or south on State Road seven, you can't read what that says at all, but when you look at it head-on, you can tell. So that's why I didn't know if it was a difference on, because it's taking up different space.
So as you approach the sign, I hope that you're not gonna see, and if it's angled um-
If it looks like on the right.
Parallel to State Road seven.
Yeah.
I hope that this isn't the view angle that you will have, or else you're gonna be driving down the canal. But there is gonna be a point, you think about, where it's, when it's parallel to State Road seven, there is gonna be a point where your view angle, you're gonna see, be able to see it as you're driving by, and then it's gonna be perpendicular to your view angle as you're entering it.
Hopefully Captain Niaux is in here to hear how fast I drive down State Road seven, but that's difficult to see.
One of the things I'm gonna assume, Bradford, is that you, you have been through these combinations and permutations of signage orientation, all that kind of stuff at staff level. If I heard you say, if I heard correctly, that you said the literal interpretation of our code really puts you in a position to deny, recommend denial of this.
Correct.
You know, one of the things that we talked about when we were talking individually is that in the Village of Royal Palm Beach, we have a sign code that we've, we're proud of actually, because first of all, it took quite an effort at some expense to come up with something that was moderate and comparable to similar kinds of communities and, and needs. And actually, it's turned out well for five or six years, right? I mean, we really haven't had that many variances, signs, signage-wise. Now, speaking from a reference point of what we had prior to our updated sign code, which was almost every other day we were getting a request for a variance and that type of thing. So we do find our sign code to be something that we want to adhere to, and, and only if there's a really compelling reason to consider a variance, at least from my point of view, that's, that's where I am on this whole thing. And yet I did hear you say that the literal interpretation puts you in a position where, of course, as staff, you have to recommend denial, and yet our planning and zoning recommended approval. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All of those things considered, and one other thought is that on variances, they are not precedent-setting, is that correct?
That is right, Mr. Vice Mayor. If the council were to grant this variance tonight, every variance application that comes before you is evaluated based on the facts of that application. You evaluate the criteria that Bradford had up on the screen. Your job tonight, as is your job for any variance, is to evaluate the application before you against those criteria that are in your code. So any grant of a variance, whether it be this one or any other variance, does not set a precedent going forward for mandating that the council approve future variance requests of a similar request. So no precedent-setting.
That's a consideration for me as well. And again, like I said, I'm sure that the staff has taken a look at the combination. I heard that there was some reduction in number of signs.
Correct, yes, sir.
And I don't know if there's any other possibilities that either the applicant or the staff sees for further reduction.
No, sir.
Okay. Rich?
My, my thought on this was, what was it, was it about five years ago or so, Ray, that we, I mean, we did a substantial update, as the Vice Mayor said, I mean, put a lot of work into changing the village code, you know, to try to prevent these type of things and be consistent. But to me, the selling point, speaking with the applicants, was I don't think we had an emergency room ordinance at that point in time. And to me, emergency rooms are different. I, I, you need to know where to go. It's gotta be, you know, bold and readily accessible to the public, because that's, you know, if you're, if you're in pain, even if it's not life-threatening or whatever, you want to get in there and get someone to look at you. So that's why I wasn't as, you know, taken aback by the, the increase in the monument sign and some of the wayfaring signs and the other things we'll get into. To me personally, if it was, you know, something else, I think it would be different, but because the, you know, hospital or emergency room ordinance came after the sign ordinance, to me, that's- to me, that's a reason that I'm in favor, at least we'll start with the monument sign.
Okay.
I didn't want to take away, Councilwoman Roduski, I know, started with the question, so I didn't, yeah, no, but I didn't want to take away if there was other, are we taking case?
Selena, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Jeff, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that as we were going through this, though, my concern is is that it's all or nothing. I don't like that it's all individual stuff, because I can say that there's some I approve of, there's some that I don't approve of. So I didn't want to take away, Councilwoman, that you had started with the questioning.
Well, that was part of it, right? And so I look at some of these and have no problem with, and I have a couple of questions and concerns about some others.
Okay.
Is this an all-or-nothing thing, Mitty, or?
The application before you is for all 10 variance requests. So that is the application before you. If the applicant is willing to modify certain components of the application, as you continue discussing the application, that can certainly be contemplated at that time. But the application before you is all 10 variances, right?
All or nothing, at this point, unless the applicant wishes to consider other possibilities. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Any response?
Yes, thank you, sir. Can you state your name for the council, please?
Good evening, Kentum with Urban Design Studio. Thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you, raise your hand again for me. Do you swear for me to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes, ma'am. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Nice to see you all this evening. So this sign is important for us. I think if we continue through the presentation, there may be some room for flexibility on potentially some of the directional signs, but this sign from, and Councilwoman, I also noted here, it's 120 feet. So this sign is really important for the emergency, the location, and how we go for this one. So this one, we would really appreciate your support on, and maybe we just kind of walk through them one by one.
How would we structure then that decision?
Maybe like a straw poll or something.
I think what would be prudent is that you counsel to discuss each of the 10 items, and then you'll get a sense for which ones the applicant can respond. As you address your concerns, each of your council concerns for each different variance, and then they can respond based on your comments. And talk about them all, and then based on your discussion, when we get the motions, we'll deal with any changes then.
Okay, so shall we just step through them one at a time?
Yep. And I'll go through the slides, just like I did with my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Brad.
Go ahead on this one, since I do know that if this is the most important to you, then, that's 10 feet, we allow for 7 feet, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so dropping the logo down a little bit and just condensing them a bit, that will then, how obscure does that look versus what you're asking for now?
Well, what you would be doing is, if you drop down the logo, you're, what you're essentially doing is, is you would, and I'm looking at this area here, where this dimension says that it's 15 inches. Oh, sorry. So I'm roughing that at 7 inches above this. So we'll call it 10 feet tall. 10 feet by 6 feet, which still exceeds our code, but it is a variance. That is, it is a reduction in the variance request. So you'd be looking at 60 square feet. You would still be looking at a 3-foot variance to the height limitation of 7 feet by our village code, which will only allow 7 feet tall. Now, this would be 10 feet tall, maximum of 42 square foot, where this one would be 60 square feet.
The application have a response to that?
So I think if two points of discussion here, one, just a quick recall on, I don't know if you can see Lindsey's screen here, or the screen, is it possible to put that back up? There is, there is the concrete barrier wall that is part of our approach here along the, and that's an important part from a viewshed standpoint, so the sign does need to be a little bit higher. I think if you ended up pushing the pineapple down, I think it would look a little quirky just from a sign, from a frontage, from a font standpoint.
Ken, to that point, the 450 number is the lowest point. Is there a way to make that at least higher on the sign? Because truthfully, I know the Department of Doctors Hospital, I think that's what it says underneath Baptist Health, consumers who are trying to get to the emergency room don't care about that, but they want to know about the 450 in terms of the address.
Turn around and ask, but I'm pretty sure we could swap medical office and 450 on issue here. Oh, oops. Come on up, explain that word.
Well, then can in addition be made on the side view? So can the 450 be on that? Because that's, to Councilwoman Roduski's point of view, is that you can't see the address now anyway, because of the...
Yeah, the number, I don't know, but at the Department of the hospital, we have to have it.
The hospital, the medical part, can we flip, we can flip 450 in medical?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
The suggestion of maybe possibly putting it on the side of the sign instead of at the bottom of the sign?
Oh, on each side, sure, that makes sense, yes, I'm sorry, yes, we can do, we can definitely do that.
Department of Doctor's Hospital?
So we put 450 on each edge, we can do that, yes.
Okay.
And then does it buy us a little space to reduce the height?
You still have to push, I mean, your argument, the councilwoman was that, you know, the barrier.
So Bradford, does that then negate a variance?
No, yes, sir.
So it just reduces the size?
That 450 and putting it on the side, the concern was that the 450 was too low, now you're putting it on the side, and so that is more visible. It's just tweaking the sign.
But again, from a point of view of whether or not a variance would be required for this particular sign, it doesn't affect that.
No, sir.
And then, just the top of the pineapple, just the pineapple itself is above the regular 6 feet, correct?
One more time, sorry.
Just the pineapple, there's nothing, it's just sitting up there, right?
Correct, yeah, it's the element that protrudes.
The 10 feet, that is 10 feet, yeah, so the, because that's what I was thinking, if you lowered it.
But again, your response to that was, well, if you lowered it, it won't look right. It'll look a little awkward, rather than separated and that kind of thing. So it's an appearance kind of a thing. Again, we're still in need of a variance.
Correct.
I'm not sure where that leaves us on this one in particular.
Do you want us to go through each one individually? Do you want us to give you some feedback on it?
That was what I said we were going to do, yes, exactly.
I can say is have the discussion on all of them, and then you'll hear from them, they'll hear from you, and they can tell you which ones are more important. And if there's adjustments to be made, then they can be made before motions.
Okay.
So then, do we want to move to the second sign?
Sure.
Okay.
Comments for the second one?
Which one are you looking at? Well, why don't you go through your, Bradford has it, yeah, thanks.
Okay, so this is the next one that we discussed, and this was to allow for six wayfinding signs, where village code allows for four wayfinding signs, where the, and the original request was for eight. And those are located here in red, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Okay, are there any comments from the council on those signs?
I, oh, go ahead, Richard.
My first thought is, fortunately, I was at Palms West a little bit this week, and I'm very familiar with Palms West, because my three children were born there. But if you're not familiar with it, and this is a brand-new emergency facility, I think those wayfinding signs, you know, depicting it, because I'm always going to the hospital, I'm not going to some of the other things. I think those are important, especially from people coming from the south. I didn't think the wayfinding signs were too much for me. And I think the more that we can help direct people into and out of the new facility is a good idea in my mind, but that's just where I was coming from. And the recent experience that I didn't, it wasn't an issue for me, but I could see how it could be confusing for people going into, if you've never been to HCA before Palms West, you could get a little lost in there. So the more structure and direction we give people, I think the better.
Okay, any other comments on the wayfinding?
I'll just say is that I don't think we need all of them. I think when you go in there, it's such a short distance from the entrance of, from State Road 7 to the building. In addition, you're asking for larger signs and multiple signs on the building. It's not as though I'm going through a maze of a campus trying to figure out which building am I going into, so I don't think we need them. That's just my personal opinion. I think if you stuck with the four, that's fine.
So any comment from the applicant on that?
I think going back with what the bill returns over, I take this in as a whole, and we'll come back.
All right, well, all right, that's fine, so we can continue with that. So since I now have the floor, I will tell you that I think wayfinding signs are particularly important. What Rich has said has been my experience, and honestly, if I didn't know my way around some of these, whether it be Wellington or whether it be Palms West, I might even have a hard time finding, well, I wouldn't have a hard time finding the emergency room at Wellington, but not absolutely sure exactly how to get to the emergency room without prior knowledge at Palms West. So as far as I'm concerned, wayfinding signs are particularly important. Okay, want to go to the next one?
Okay, this one, 2064A, to allow for three wall signs on the building, where village code allows for only one wall sign.
What?
They're kind of multiple.
I think the pictures would help.
Yeah, that's...
The different signs that are going to be up.
You're on this line, so this is the one.
Okay.
This is the second one. This is the third.
So I have a question, why are we counting, does the, because it's an architectural embellishment, do we have to count that as the pineapple as a sign?
It's a logo, and it conveys commercial copy.
And just for clarification, it is a relief. It's not colored, it's not lit up, it is just, kind of like how the Chase mobile, I mean, the Chase logo is on their building.
Correct, it's actually painted to match the existing wall color.
It's painted, though, so it's not a, it doesn't stand out, it's not a relief, it's not engraved. It is flush.
Any other comments on those signs? Obviously, the pineapple seems to be the pivotal issue. And for those that are from Charleston, South Carolina, they know pineapples are really important.
No, literally, it gives them a...
Exactly, that's what it is, indeed. Okay, we have anything else on these?
No, sir.
All right, then can we move to the next one?
This is the wayfinding sign, where it's to be 2 square feet. And it's, it is, actually, go back, no. So this is the next one. This is to allow for a wall sign on the south elevation, where this sign would be allowed if it was facing interior to the planned commercial development, which it does not.
So basically, my understanding, if I got this right from speaking with Lindsey, this is for someone coming from the south, heading to the north, so that you won't be looking at a blank wall building and not knowing where the hospital is, because we do have the interconnectivity, right?
Correct.
Correct. That makes sense to me.
I imagine people who don't want to make a U-turn to get into the proper entrance are going to go in through the light and then navigate through the parking lot.
Which will take you from the south into the facility, and it would then suggest that something like this Baptist Health wall sign would be helpful. Okay, any other comments on that one? Okay, how about the next one?
It is repetitive. I appreciate that you guys have a reduction in what you've proposed when discussing with staff. But we've talked about this, is that it's always, we need bigger, we need more. And it's not just you, it'll be the next person coming in, and oh, the sign is this, and they have two, so we need three. And I understand that it's not a precedence, but it also sets the record of, well, you know what? You've done it, and here it is, and it's not any different, so then continue to do it. I think there's just a lot of repetitiveness, and the building is, and the area is not that big, that it's kind of, I find is overkill. I do understand why you're requesting it, though.
Okay, next sign.
So this is the wayfinding sign, that is 11.6 square feet in area, where wayfinding signs are limited to 2 square feet by our code.
Any comments on that sign?
I will say the same thing, it literally wrote overkill on my paper. We've got the big front emergency sign, and now we have this other bigger one. Sort of reminds me of a car dealership, sorry. And so is there any way to reduce that size of that sign?
So there's a comment, any other comments on that sign?
A thought of mine was, because we have two different things going on. We have the emergency entrance, which to me is the more important one, and then we have the medical building. So I definitely think they're necessary, and they need to be big enough for people to say. But what is big enough? Is big enough under our code? I'm not necessarily sure, but I do think that they're necessary to get the people to go to which side they're going in, particularly the emergency. If we're going to go one bigger and one smaller, the emergency one needs to be bigger, in my opinion, so that the people can get in there as they're going in, where just the medical office buildings seem as Selena said, you know, maybe, if there's anything that's overkill, it would be that, but I don't think the emergency entrance personally is overkill, in my opinion.
Okay. Any other comments on that one?
Sorry, Bradford, can you go back and show us the other, the one with both the bigger signs and the emergency room?
The emergency vertical sign?
Yeah, do you have a, yeah.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
You could only have emergency and get rid of entrance. You would assume that that would be an entrance, right?
That's reasonable.
Entrance. Will that take up, will that fall into what we have?
Yes.
Okay, great.
No, we need to know that, I agree with you.
Right.
I don't feel well, so otherwise, we'll be answering all day long. No, this is the emergency room, the doctor's office are next door, so it would be a madness to run it.
Okay.
I can see people from the south just stopping and going into the first entrance that they have there.
So then it is, you guys are okay then with ER entrance?
And they know what the emergency is in the regular office? Absolutely, thank you.
Question about this?
ER entrance, is that what I'm hearing? They're just emergency dropping entrance, and that would actually reduce it even more than ER entrance.
All right.
I was just going to ask one more question. It looks like there's clearly a drop-off in this photo. Car drop-off, right? There's not the same kind of drop-off for the office building, correct? Okay.
All right.
Very sick person to come in, you know, you go get them in a wheelchair, you know, you're trying to ease as much as you can that enters to the emergency room.
Okay, thank you. Next sign?
Again, this is where the medical office entrance would be. So maybe the same type of a thing where you drop the entrance?
Right. You see that as a possibility?
Yeah, we'd be fine with medical offices. In fact, that's actually, our request is for medical offices, that.
Okay, so you'd be willing to drop the entrance?
Okay.
Okay, next sign?
Just one second, if I could just make a quick note.
Yes, please. We don't want to lose the track of this.
Emergency entrance?
Yeah, this is, so...
This is, pardon me?
No, for the...
The ambulance people? Okay.
You have two on that north side.
There's, and is it okay if I share my screen for a moment here?
The first one was for this emergency entrance on the north side that I went over. Then we went to the... Correct.
Okay, thanks.
North end of the building. And we just want to make sure we're on proposing the consistent signage, because we, we have this ambulance entrance only over on the north entrance.
And it's more towards, the ambulance one is more towards the eastern portion of the building. This is the one that's more towards the western portion of the building.
Correct.
That's not an entrance for the public, that's an entrance for the ambulance.
Only for the ambulance.
Correct. So, then can we just put ambulance over it instead of emergency entrance? Because now I'm going to think as a, as a, yeah.
Yeah.
Could do that.
We will need square footages on all of these amendments prior to, so we're going to have to calculate.
Yes, thank you. This one from the definition, and Kathleen is here, she can articulate it better than I can, but the idea of this entrance is specifically for ambulance entry only. They don't want people walking in, driving, parking their car there, that's the reason why this one. So, this one, we would like to keep all the language in place.
Well, that's what we're wondering, though, is could you put ambulance? Because if you put emergency entrance like that, I think pedestrians are going to think it's an entrance to come in from the side, versus if you put ambulance, I know not to go in there.
Right.
And ambulance knows that that's where they're supposed to go.
Will it phrase ambulance only?
Oh, you mean on the, on the, on the, oh, yes.
No, no.
We're looking at two different things here.
At now, because that says entrance, emergency entrance.
If we pair our, share our PowerPoint, we just want to make sure we have the.
Oh, you're linking a different one? Oh!
What? It's not going to be.
Thank you.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, so the first one is, this is, this is what we thought you were talking about, so we have, okay. This sign is important, the ambulance entrance only above the doorway. And I think, let's see if you could jump to the.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. So, this side, it depicts the ambulance entrance only above the doorway, and that's consistent with the Baptist facilities. And just for clarity, this emergency, um, vertical stack, as you can see in this rendering, is on the jet out of the building. That's, although it's on the north, it's facing west. And it's this vertical stack here. So, we're dealing with the ambulance entrance only component?
Yes, that's what we've been talking about, I think, right? And, and so that's what it says right now.
That's what it says, that's what it's planned right now, ambulance entrance only.
And what were we looking at?
And what were we looking at? The one that said emergency.
It said. Looks like the same doors.
Yeah, they do. So, we just had a missed communication on.
Yes, look back.
That one.
There it is.
Where is that?
The north side, correct.
So, that was just what we were looking at. The difference is, is you have it in red.
Correct, correct.
And it's showing a black here, emergency.
Ambulance, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which one is it?
The, the ambulance entrance only in, in the red is.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, so we don't need to be talking about that.
That's incorrect.
Yeah, that's inconsistent with our.
All right. Okay, so we're, we good then?
It's on the application, Bradford.
This was pulled from their packet.
So, the one that says, the, the bad stuff. Okay. I'd go with their wording.
Yeah.
All right. So, so the, okay, if we go with their wording, even though it's not part of their package.
What, what wording are we going with?
Ambulance entrance only, or do you just ambulance only?
We prefer ambulance entrance only. The square foot, I mean, the, the, the square footage is correct. The words may not have been articulated correctly, but our variance request is to 3.6 square feet.
It says, just as it says here, ambulance entrance only, under the proposed, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Are you, are we tracking?
I'm sure.
All right, great. Okay, next sign?
Yep.
Are we ready for the next sign?
Yep.
All right, great, let's go to the next sign.
So, this was what we had thought was the ambulance entrance signage, but they have it on a vertical stack on the wall.
I just personally think the word emergency is confusing when you're looking that it's for the ambulance.
Yeah.
I don't think it, because you're still asking for the variance, and it's still going to take up the same amount of space. But then with fire, with Palm Beach County Fire here, I think they do need to come through and see the site prior to opening, and everyone's very familiar with where they're going to need to go and directions. The private ambulance companies, I don't know if they do that. I know Palm Beach County Fire does. So, I don't know, I, I'm kind of torn between this one, because I can understand if you're looking at it, if I'm on the west side looking east and I can see it, that's clear that it's on that side. So, I understand that, this is the one I'm kind of torn about. But it should say, my thought is, it should say ambulance, not emergency.
Comment?
We'll add that comment to the, to the, let's make a deal.
All right, great. Any other, any other comments about the vertical emergency sign?
I would just agree with that, because if I'm coming in, the traffic light that's northern to the property, and I go through that parking lot, I'm going to see emergency, and I'm going to think I'm going to drop off my family member. Even though, then I'll get to, then I'll see, I'll see the emergency sign first, and then I'll see the ambulance only, and then I'll be frustrated.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay? So, we got that?
Discuss that?
Yeah, you.
Wait till the end.
Okay. So, so the idea, though, if I've got it correct, then is the, the vertical sign that right now says emergency would become ambulance.
We'll, we'll discuss at the end.
Okay, all right. I'm just, just trying to keep.
That was added here.
Right.
Yeah, the vertical stack is what we, um, the mention for.
It's not in the application.
Um, we'll continue, this is, um.
Okay, so.
It's the, the vertical stack, I guess there was an inconsistency on the, um.
So, let me, let me, let's tell you what, I mean, let's, let's cut. Okay, so, we can withdraw the sign, we just talked about it. We, if, long as we can have that ambulance entrance only above that doorway.
All right.
At the size that we're requesting, we can withdraw this sign and remove it from the package.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Then, we move to the next one?
Yes, sir. And that is on this slide here. It is a 53.7 square foot cabinet sign where village code allows 10 square feet.
That's the pineapple, right?
Sir.
I'll just go real quick, and I'll say, I hate all the sign variances, but I can understand from an architectural perspective that it is visually appealing, otherwise it is a blank wall. It is, and if it is flush, and it's, it's not illuminated, I'm fine with it.
Any other comments about the pineapple?
I don't have a problem with the pineapple.
Okay, me neither. Very hospitable. Okay. Uh, next one?
The good news is, that's the last one.
Really?
Yes.
We, we were on a roll.
Okay, let's see.
Now, now my question would be, how do we proceed?
So, I think the applicant has heard what you've said. I think now is the chance for them to respond to what they're, I guess, as Ken said, the let's make a deal portion that they're coming with. And then I think, for the record, we do, before there are any motions, we need to go back through each number and give the sizes, if there is an acquiescence on sizes, because I don't know that we're going to have square footages tonight, but we need maximum dimensions at minimum to be approved as part of any motion.
If we could take two minutes, just a little discussion amongst ourselves, we'll come back to you.
Sure. Why don't we take a recess for, why don't we take a recess for five minutes, if, if everybody wants to take a break, that'd be fine. We'll reconvene in one minute.
It's this one, it's that one, right?
All right.
I didn't interrupt with you.
No, 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 I, I got it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, it was happening, I didn't realize it.
Same thing here, this would be.
Yep. So, that would, that would just be seven square feet, because that's.
Let's give us eight, let's give us eight, because medical is bigger. Just to be safe, so we don't, so we don't block, so it's.
Oh, wow. So, we did good.
Yeah, we did. I think we're back from a commercial break. Are we ready to reconvene? All right, let's, let's reconvene then.
Good evening again, Ken Toomey with Urban Design. Thank you so much for allowing us a few minutes to caucus. There, as you know, there are rules involved, particularly for emergency rooms, so we'd had to just double check and make sure we weren't making a mistake on what we're about to say. And also appreciate everybody's input. You know, we look at things from one way, you look at things from another way, the community looks at things from another way. This has been a good, a good learning experience for us also. So, first thing to address, the monument sign entry. So, yes, we would relocate that 450, the, the address, and put it on the side of the, put it on the side of that sign on the entrance point, if that's acceptable, acceptable to the commission, that's what we would like, or to the council, that's what we would like to do on the entry sign. And I should probably show some pictures here. But that's where we're relocating the, the address, 450, and then moving it to the side of that sign, which Bradford has up on the screen. On the directional signs, we can remove one directional sign, we looked at it in more detail, and if we could pop that up, it is signed.
Yes, that's why I came out.
Yeah, it's, it's number eight.
Which, which one are we talking about?
Is that the right one?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. It's, we looked at it when we were out in the hallway, it was repetitive, and kind of your discussion about repetitive, we can remove number eight if that's acceptable. All right, then, then the next discussion was about the word entrance on both the medical and, and the emergency. Now, as your great village attorney reminded me, these are numeric variances, so we are working quickly on the math, but we were, are willing to drop the word entrance from both of those. So, on the screen in front of you, where it identifies the word emergency, we would eliminate the word entrance, and the same thing on, go ahead, sir.
And the, the right one just says medical office.
Oh, it just says, and we will leave it just medical office on the other one. Okay. Okay, so he's doing the math real quick to save the variances.
Yeah, I have the quantity of.
Thank you. But jumping back to the monument sign, just out of, out of, just a question for, for the commission. Where it identifies the word 450, if we put it on the side and kept it where it is, would that be acceptable also? Just, they're thinking about how people enter their things into their phone, so we would put the 450 on both sides and then leave 450 in the front also.
I don't have a problem.
No, and also, again, I think it's just because it's, it's hard to see when you are driving in those directions, you can't see it. I don't, I think the issue was that, it was just because you couldn't see it as soon as you make that turn.
Over the Jersey barrier.
Correct.
In the thought process, when you come in, you might want, just want to reconfirm where you are, and that's the reason why we'd want to leave that 450 on the sign itself.
Reducing the height of the sign.
No, we're leaving it almost.
It's just moving the 450 to the side so you can see it coming from the north and south.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Lency, what was the square footage that you came up with for this sign?
For the emergency entrance, if we just do emergency, that'll be seven. If we just do emergency, that'll be seven inches by 10 inches, which is 70 inches, 5.8 square feet.
The one for medical office entrance?
So, we're currently.
I thought we were getting rid of entrance.
No, I thought you dropped the entrance word.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you okay leaving that the way it is? It doesn't have the word entrance.
Correct, the current.
Medical office.
Correct. And that's what the current variance request, square footage.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, so it's not what it shows on the, on the PowerPoint. Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could, 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 could I ask the applicant, could we go through these in numerical order? Stay in the order that they're on your agenda, because you're all looking at a numerical list of, of variances.
Oh, I thought we were. I was listing them, one, two, three, four, okay.
Worried about. So, if, can you guys go in the same order that they're listed on the page and just go, you already did number one, which was the monument sign, but go to number two, which is the six way, way for signing, excuse me, wayfinding signs.
Absolutely. Um, so, is it okay if I share my PowerPoint here?
Well, I was going through the, the right, the order that it appears.
Correct. Yeah, we're on, on this monument sign, it's not a change in the numerical request, we're just adding a 450 on the side. For variance number two, we are prepared to remove sign number eight as to our vehicular wayfinding signs on the site. As such, the variance, the proposed will be five vehicular wayfinding signs proposed in the PCD for a variance of an increase of one vehicular wayfinding sign to be permitted. And that's again with the removal of sign number eight.
There was, yeah, this, this variance here, there was no discussion on the reduction of the number of signage?
Correct.
The discussion on this was to leave, or no, to further discuss the sign on the south side of the building. I believe that there was some discussion of some redundancy on the approach, where you have the Baptist Health here and then the Baptist Health there.
Do you want me to talk, or you want to go?
Please, sir.
I think when I look at this is because you have. I think when I look at this is because you have Baptist Health Emergency Huge on there, so we know it's Baptist Health, we see the pineapple, we have the larger monument sign up front. You're requesting the south side building, the south side to have the sign as well. I think the Baptist Health on that side, next to the medical office building, is redundant as well. And I know that that's one of the variances that they're asking for the additional sign.
Okay, what, yes.
Can we start with, with number four? Are we, are we good with number, or not number four, number three? Is everything, we're okay with number three? Or is what you're saying, Selena, to get rid of this one over on the right that says Baptist Health?
Things, if you remove that one, because I, it just says Baptist Health right on top. You have the pineapple as well. I think that's where it's, it becomes redundant. And then if you do want the one on the south facing side...
I hate to merge things together and with the thought of cluttering, but from our perspective, from Baptist's perspective, sign number, or variance number four, this sign would be the preferred duplicative sign that we would like to remove.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
On the south side, that would be the prefer, because when you pull into the parking lot, they want real clear signage, and that was kind of the thought process.
Jeff, if it's between the Baptist Health with the pineapple logo,
Right, facing the south.
Between three and four, they would prefer to keep four as opposed to three?
Is that...
If they had a choice, is that right, what you're saying, Ken?
Other way around. So the sign that says 60.5, we would want to keep. We would actually lose the sign on the south side of the building.
Oh, okay.
Circling, it would be the one that we would...
Like he was saying, he wants to, when you're approaching the building from the west, he wants full clear Baptist Health.
Okay, I'm lost. But, that's fine, but I'm not, so...
Again, sir, okay, and actually Bradford's in control of the mouse. So Bradford, if you could circle the one we want to keep on the left. We want to keep that one?
Right.
We'd eliminate the one on the south.
On the south side of the building?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
And just to clarify, that keeps the variance request for variance number three the same. That removes the variance request for variance number four.
Okay.
So, so variance number four, we're requesting sidewall signage to face the exterior of the planned commercial development. That's the south facade sign, the south facing sign. That's the one that we want to remove from the request. We want to keep the variance number three request with all of the signage on the west facing front facade. We want to keep that request as is. So with the removal of the south facing sign, we will be removing the variance request for variance number four.
Eliminates that variance request totally.
Yep.
Okay.
So we delete variance number four.
And if everyone's comfortable with that from council? Because I, I'd like to keep it, but if I'm in the minority, then I'm out.
But it would have made more sense to keep the south facing sign than the west facing one, but that's your decision because it's your building.
It's up to them, but I'm just saying.
So I'm in the same place. It's kind of like coming up from the south, approaching the building. It would seem like that sign saying Baptist Health would be useful, helpful. And giving that one up in order to keep what appears to be somewhat redundant signs on the west side of the building doesn't make sense to me, but I could be misunderstanding it.
If that's what they choose to do, I'll go with what they choose to do. I would rather keep both, but that's me. And I don't think I'm in the majority on that one.
Both the Baptist Health on the, on the south side as well as...
And the one, the one right to the west. With the pineapple, the two little pineapple signs. Better.
Does the applicant have a response to that? Any further response on that?
Our hearsay, I think the question is, do, our preference would be to eliminate the south side and keep the front side, two separate uses, recognize that from our, from our standpoint and our perspective, that's important to us. We'd eliminate, we'd request to eliminate variance number four.
So we, are we tracking that?
Yes.
Okay.
Going to the next variance request, where we are going to have only emergency. We're going to remove entrance. That sign is going to be seven by 10 for 5.8 square feet. By 10 inches tall. Seven feet long, by 10 inches tall, for a total of 5.8 square feet.
And that's number five, Bradford, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
And number six is the medical office entrance, where it will only read medical office for square footage of...
And just to clarify, number six, actually, the, the variance request is for just the medical offices. So our variance number six will stay the same. I think that was just a miscommunication on the renderings for where it says medical office entrance. Our package just says medical office.
Alright, so this is the way that we were suggesting.
Correct. Yeah. Footage for variance number six is the same. It'll be proposed 14 square feet in sign area for an additional 12 square feet.
Okay. Wait, number seven?
The next one, for number seven, it will read ambulance entrance only and stay, remain the same square footage.
Correct.
At 5.6 square feet. The vertically...
We're comfortable removing variance request number eight for the vertically stacked emergency signage.
Okay.
And last, but certainly not least...
Number nine?
That was number nine, the emergency.
That was number eight, I think number nine is...
The, this was number seven. The vertically stacked emergency was number eight. No, I'm sorry. This is number 10. Vertically stacked emergency was number nine. This was number eight. So, six, five, four...
You might want to stop, I'm not sure that's helping.
Yeah, let's...
Stop.
Can we go back to number seven, Bradford? And that's the one I have written down, that we're going from ambulance entrance to just ambulance on the north side of the building.
So, just to clarify, variance number seven, what we dimensioned in the variance that we went in with is 5.6 square feet in sign area for ambulance entrance only. We want to keep that, and that's for variance number seven. Variance number eight, we have at 10 feet, eight inches in height for the vertically stacked emergency sign. We are comfortable removing that sign and as such, removing variance number eight.
Okay.
And then variance number nine is for the quantity of directional signs. We're requesting four with the removal of the vertically stacked emergency sign. That variance will now change to a request of three directional signs for an increase in one directional sign. And that's variance number nine. And then finally, variance number 10, the last one, is the cabinet sign on the pineapple structure.
Okay, I retract all of those, so that...
I'm sorry. One more question.
Could you show me a picture of number nine, what we're, what we're talking about?
Correct, and I, if it's okay just to pull up our PowerPoint. And that's what we have vertically stacked here, and then...
Directional signs are permitted. And, okay, so you're going from four to three, did you say?
Correct. And then this would remove variance number eight, because that's what we're requesting for the vertical emergency stack. Since we're removing that vertical emergency stack, variance number eight is now gone.
Okay.
Okay.
And then again, nine, we're going from four to three with the removal of that emergency stack. And variance number 10, the final variance, is for the cabinet sign on the pineapple logo.
Which stays.
Correct.
How are we doing on track and all of that?
I think we're good. Do you want me to repeat them, or is everybody comfortable?
Well, I want to see if there's any other comments or discussions before we do that, because if you can repeat it, then we might be in a position to be able to make a motion. Any other comments? Okay, then please. And I think the applicant needs to pay really close attention to this statement.
Yes, and what I'd like to do, Mr. Vice Mayor, is after I state each one of them, I'm going to ask the applicant if they're in agreement with what I've said and make sure that we're, we're in lockstep here. Just so there's no confusion, because there's been a lot of discussion. So, variance number one remains unchanged, that's the monument sign, correct?
What we put 450 on the sides?
That, that has no bearing on the variance, but yes, that'll be a site plan change. But yes, thank you for that. Noting that the 450 will stay on the front and be also on the sides of the sign, but again, no impact on the variance. Variance number two is being reduced from six wayfinding signs down to five wayfinding signs. Is the applicant in agreement?
Eliminating number eight wayfinding sign?
Right.
From your standpoint, it would be...
The labeled, when they were...
From four to three.
You're in agreement, reducing to five, eliminating number, labeled sign number eight on your plans. Variance three remains unchanged, three wall signs.
Correct.
Variance four is being withdrawn by the applicant.
Being withdrawn, correct.
Variance five, the sign will only say emergency, and it will be a 5.8 square foot, seven foot, 10 inch sign. Variance...
Oh, right, okay, okay, sir.
You good? Okay. Variance six, no change.
Correct. Correct.
Variance seven will say ambulance entrance only. The square footage will remain at 5.6 square feet.
Correct.
Variance eight, the applicant is withdrawing.
Correct.
Variance nine... Okay. The vertical emergency sign, okay? And then variance 10 remains unchanged, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the applicant is in agreement with all of that that's just been stated on the record, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, with that said, then if someone would like to make a motion, and a second?
And you, you don't have to say everything I just said, so any maker of a motion could say, and again, as is the case with any variance, you assume that all the criteria have been satisfied, but you could just say, if there's a motion to approve, that you approve as stated by the village attorney.
Okay, which I'm prepared to make that motion.
I would make the motion to approve, what are we up, two, six, five? We're still on five. Regular agenda item five with the changes indicated by the village attorney.
And just so the record is clear, it's, your motion would be approving the eight variances with the two withdrawn, so it's a total of eight variances as stated by the village attorney, is that correct?
The eight variances with the two withdrawn by the applicant, as stated by the village attorney.
The motion, do we have a second? Alright, the motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, we have that motion approved, and so we...
The next.
Can now move on to regular agenda item number six. Which is a public quasi judicial hearing to consider application number 24-034 SPM, AAR, an application by Urban Design Studio and adoption of resolution number 24-10 confirming council action. The applicant is seeking site plan modification and architectural approval for an existing 58,341 square foot retail building for a property located at 450 South State Road 7. Turn to the attorney.
The applicant's remains sworn, I'll ask the council for any expertise disclosures on this item.
Staff and applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, and so, yes, so over to Bradford.
This is a site plan modification request for an 11th sign variance request, no, I'm kidding. The applicant is seeking approval for a site plan modification and architectural approval to rehabilitate and reuse the existing 58,341 square foot retail building with a 390 square foot addition to be used as an integrated care center with allocated medical office uses. The applicant is also requesting architectural approval for color and materials and landscaping. The proposed site improvements include repurposing the existing 58,341 square foot building. The updated facility will serve as an integrated care center with designated medical office spaces. Of the total building area, 27,313 square feet will be dedicated to the hospital-based off-campus emergency department component, while 31,418 square feet will be allocated for medical office uses. The medical office uses will, within an integrated care center, may include services such as physicians, office clinics, ambulatory surgery, outpatient services, diagnostic imaging, lavatory facilities, physical therapy, and offices for medical practitioners. The project also includes reconfiguring the parking area and making related landscape improvements. And the art in public places is proposed to be located, if you could look at the screen, it'll be located here, where my cursor is. This slide illustrates the landscape plan. This here is the elevation drawings. And I think I got everything mixed up here. It stated the, just give me a second here. There were, okay. Staff is recommending approval, I apologize. This slide got mixed up into all of my other slides as I was going back and forth, but I'll just read this here. We are recommending approval of this application. And there's two conditions that I would like to mention prior to the issuance of the first building permit. The applicant shall be required to make contribution to the village's tree bank in an amount of $14,700, which shall be utilized in accordance with section 1579 of Village Code. The art in public places requirement in section 2675.5 of the Village Code must be met. The public art requirement for this project is 1% of the total vertical construction cost for only the first 25 million for this, for this project, based on the total certified cost estimate of 30 million, the equivalent to the maximum requirement of $250,000 public art contribution. The public art installation shall be placed in the location that was depicted on the site plan and shall be installed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on September 24, 2024, recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. And staff is recommending approval. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Bradford. Would the applicant care to make any comments?
Bradford covered everything, we're just available for any comments or questions.
Only because of the signage experience that we've just had. No, actually, he did a great job, thank you Bradford, appreciate that. So, we'll turn to the public, see if there's any cards?
It's Vice Mayor.
Diane, no cards? Ray, any hands raised?
No, Vice Mayor.
Are there any individuals present who would like to make a public comment on this item agenda? Agenda item, rather. If not, then I'll turn back to the council, see if there's any questions or comments from members of the council.
One question, Bradford, you can clarify it. If they're contributing to the tree fund, but are they removing trees on the property?
There were some trees that were, that maybe didn't fit into the reconfiguring and the expansion, and then also the, the drive up to the emergency. So they may have been removing some specimen trees that required the contribution to the tree fund.
Okay, but then, what you've put back in, or what the applicant has put back in then, in the back, is also making up for this, correct? I mean, you started the fine, I just wanted to make sure that I understand that you are replanting trees in the back or you're adding what we discussed earlier.
Correct, and Rob is, I have Rob here to speak to it, so.
Inside, I just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Could Mr. Vice Mayor, before he speaks, can you raise your hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, and state your name for the council, please.
Absolutely, my name is Rob Dinsmore, I'm with Urban Design Studio, was the landscape architect on the project. The tree fund payment is coming from the removal of, I think, I believe it was eight or nine specimen royal palms out front, being impacted by the relocation of that driveway and the removal of the islands. As you can imagine... As you can imagine, royal palms, you probably don't want in a highly trafficked public area, especially a medical facility, and so they were proposed to be removed. We are planting back in with native material, green buttonwood trees and sable palms in those islands in the same location out in front of the property.
Okay, so then you did replace ones, I know you took down the royal palms, but you did replace with other trees.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the council? All right, not seeing any, then I'll entertain a motion and a second.
I make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Interrupt. Given your action on the prior item, I would have to add another condition that the applicant revise all documents so that, because your architectural approval tonight includes the signage, the signage just changed, so all the documents have to be updated consistent with your variance request, so just a blanket condition that all documents be updated to reflect the signs that you approved by variance.
Does that need to be part of the motion, then?
It can be as stated by staff, I just stated it, so you don't have to rephrase it, but that would be another condition.
Okay, all right, so now I'm looking for a motion with a reference.
So I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number six with all documents to be updated per village attorney's comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That passes unanimously, thank you very much. That leads us to item, regular agenda item number seven, which is a public hearing to consider ordinance number 1050 on first reading amending Village Code, Chapter 22 subdivision of land at various sections within Articles 1 through 3 to comply with Section 177.073 Florida statutes, parenthetically expedited approval of residential building permits before a final plat is recorded.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I do need to read it by title, as you said, it's ordinance number 1050, ordinance of the Village Council, the Village Royal Palm Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 22 subdivision of land of the code of ordinances of the Village Royal Palm Beach at various sections within Articles 1 through 3 to comply with Section 177.073 Florida statutes, expedited approval of residential building permits before a final plat is recorded, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date, and for other purposes. I don't know if Chris is here, I can handle this one if you'd like.
I am here, Mitty, but if you don't mind.
Aw, man. This is in direct response to Senate Bill 812, which became effective October 1st. The brunt of this is changing, you already have a bifurcated process in your code where you have preliminary plat approval and then final plat approval. What this is doing primarily is moving some of the preliminary plat requirements up, excuse me, the final plat requirements up to preliminary plat, because what the state law now requires is an expedited process whereby building permits can be issued up to a certain percentage prior to final plat approval. So some of the things of great importance to the village, like bond requirements, that's the biggest one, needs to be part of the preliminary plat approval process rather than final plat, because there will be instances where building permits get issued after preliminary plat but before final plat. So this is indirect response to a change to the state law, we don't have a choice but to comply with the state law, so I don't tell you that to tie your hands, I just want you to understand that this is a change to the law, we have to comply, just like every other jurisdiction does. So we've built in also that expedited permitting process into the ordinance, I tried to in the agenda item summary, call out in bullets, you know, the more important things, we're requiring, as I said, the bond documents to come earlier in the process, also ownership confirmation, but it's really just to conform with the new change to state law. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions, and Chris can certainly answer any that he has on his end as well, from an engineering perspective.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mitty. Are there any public comment cards on this agenda?
No, Vice Mayor.
Any hands raised, Ray?
No, Vice Mayor.
Okay, anybody in the audience care to comment on this? If not, then I'll turn to the council and see if they have any questions for Mitty or any comments.
To comply with the law.
Can't argue with that. So not seeing or hearing any comments, I'll look for a motion and a second to approve agenda item number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item seven.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on to the eighth regular agenda item, appointment of one council member as primary member and one council member as alternate member to Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, TPA. Ray, would you care to comment on it?
As many of you know, our mayor was the primary member of the TPA and our vice mayor was the alternate member. We need to now point a new primary member. I'm not asking that, and we're doing an alternate member too tonight, so I do need a new primary member and I do need a new alternate member selected by the council to give to the TPA.
Okay, all right, well, I'll tell you, I would like to move to primary member. I've been on the TPA for about five years and before that, the MPO as an alternate, actually, I think it was an alternate to Rich for a period of time, so I would like to be moved to the primary position.
I actually have a question about the, do we have to do this at one, as one motion for both?
You could do it separately if you wanted, that's fine.
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Jeff Amara as the primary member to the TPA.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously, want to treat the second?
So I have a question about the second, is it required?
Yes.
Do we have to appoint somebody individually? Can we all be? I think we all, I think right now we all are alternates.
No, the Vice Mayor, Jeff Amara is the alternate now. With the Palm Beach County League of Cities, there's sections there where everybody else is an alternate.
That's a different situation.
On this one here, it has to be one person named specifically, not anybody that's available.
And if I could just share with you, there's a good reason for that, actually, even as an alternate, I attended most of the meetings and the idea was to try to stay current on what's going on and the information that's being provided. So if at any point in time, and Fred didn't miss very many meetings, had to step in, at least I felt like I was pretty much up to speed on it, and so it is good to have a specific individual appointed as the alternate. So do we have anyone who would care to?
Well, I would love to appoint Selena or Richard, whoever would like to be appointed to this alternacy.
Excuse me, I've done it before, so I have no problem, serving as an alternate.
Okay, want to make that motion, then?
I make a motion to appoint Councilman Valentes as the alternate to the TPA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, it passes unanimously, thank you very much. And now, I think that allows us then to move to the last agenda item, which, interestingly enough, is the appointment into a vacancy mayor's seat and the adoption of resolution 24-23 confirming council's action. Once again.
As you remember, at the last council meeting, this came up as a discussion, council directed us to have this resolution presented to the council at a special meeting that was scheduled for October 10th. That meeting was canceled because of the hurricane, and we added it to the end of this agenda, so what we're looking for is council action if they choose to appoint a mayor to the vacant mayor's seat.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. So I'm going to open it up to comment from the public, are there any comment cards? Diane?
Sorry.
All right, Ray, anyone who has their hand raised?
No mayor or vice mayor.
Okay, would anyone in the audience care to speak?
Oh, you have, I'm sorry, it's been a long meeting.
So Judith Kohler, welcome. Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Judith Kohler and I live on Royal Pine Circle in Royal Palm Beach. And I've come tonight to urge the council to appoint our vice mayor as mayor. My concern is that I think we need to move smoothly ahead and that keeping him as acting mayor, vice mayor, and councilman is not particularly a smooth process. Furthermore, my concern is that unless his seat is vacated, that it won't be up for the ballot in March, and I think it's important for democracy that we, the voters, choose who our councilman would be, rather than the city council, with all due respect to you. So therefore, I urge you to make this appointment for the rest of the term until March, when we'll have an opportunity to elect the mayor ourselves. Do you have a question for me?
We didn't set the timer, but thank you, thank you for that.
The complications. And I have discussed this with other people who are also interested in having the opportunity to have that seat vacated so people can vote on it and not appoint, not have the city council appoint.
All right, thank you, thank you for the comment, we appreciate that.
Okay.
Do we have anyone else who would like to comment? Yes.
Hi, Chuck Loomis, I live on Anandale Circle in Madison Green, and basically stating the same as the previous person, that I think it's only fair to us as local residents that the seat be filled and therefore vacating the council seat such that we have a chance to vote for a new council person. So again, I just want to have that choice and see that up, and knowing that multiple council people may run for mayor and it may cause a vacating of multiple seats in that process, that could leave the council members trying to appoint multiple council members to get through the next year. So again, I just think it's fair to all of us residents, that we have a chance to vote at least on one council seat. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Not seeing any, turn to council for comments. Not hearing, yes, sir.
I'll just reiterate what I heard, because I have spoken with people and every person that I've, two of which have approached me and most of which, a dozen or so, I've spoken with, and they said that this is the course of action, I proposed it last time, I understand it was, it was a difficult meeting and I was having problems even getting out my thoughts, still not easy, but it's, time helps a little bit, but everyone I've spoken with has said the proper course of action or the most reasonable course of action is to appoint the vice mayor as the mayor and let the people decide on the vacant seat. So I would move to appoint the vice mayor as the mayor.
We have a motion?
Well, I'd like to make some comments first. I've had a lot of time to think about this, too, and really, I've heard from residents as well, and I appreciate everybody who's reached out, and really, I think that in order to maintain our integrity and our unification and our working together and being able to maintain a strong and stable direction for the future, I too will move to appoint a vice mayor as mayor.
So I have essentially a motion and a second.
Yeah, Councilwoman Radeski, is that a second? Because Councilman Valentes did make a motion, so is your statement?
Before you commented, and I didn't.
I know, and I would like to allow Councilwoman Samius to say anything if you'd like to. Well, I think this is where it becomes difficult, I understand the vice mayor assumes the duties of the mayor if he's unable to, so we have somebody who is filling that position. I do understand from the residents, as far as having somebody appointed to that position, so it frees up the current seat. I will, the curveball in there is I plan on running for mayor, so now the question becomes is that, there are a couple different options I know that staff and the attorneys came up with that we can look at so that we do have all five seats available, because otherwise what would happen is then I would resign to run and then my seat would not, or this seat would not be on the ballot. So then now the voters wouldn't get to vote for this seat, they would now have it appointed. The other, looking at it, is I think the last time we were in a situation where there was an open seat, you had multiple residents who came out and to run for office. I think it's, residents are more likely to run against, for an open seat versus against an incumbent. So now you have to look at it and say is, well, do you have the opportunity to have all five seats available, and then what can we do to ensure that instead of making appointment, where now one seat would have to be appointed later on versus all five seats up for vote? I appreciate that, and if we do vote and approve this appointment, that will mean that seat one has been vacated as a council, and if you wanted to resign your seat and be appointed in seat number one for the term, that would open up. Correct, that is an option as well. The other option is, and I believe the village attorney can put it a little bit more eloquently than I could, but there is a way to move so that there's an appointment of two seats, the other two seats are moved, and then therefore all five seats would be available as well.
But I think we need to act on this appointment first.
Well, but then that's the options out there, so before you, if you appoint on
The option you're, I think you're talking about can only happen after this one is, if this one fails, then you can have that discussion, if this one doesn't fail, then there's no sense in having that discussion.
I think the discussion, I think the discussion was, is then this way you can have all five seats, because if a motion that's on for number nine is approved, then one seat would not be on the ballot, it would then have to be appointed.
You have to act, you have to vote on this, this is on the agenda and this one you have to vote on.
And there is a motion on the table, so technically, there should be action on the motion that's on, I'm not sure if there was a second, but there certainly was a motion made, so I think, as Ray said, it would be prudent to act on the motion that is on the table now, that is on the floor now.
Well, I will second it.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on agenda item number nine. No further comments, I will put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
It passes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment with hopefully the indulgence of the village attorney, because the way I see it, we now have vacancy in seat one. If we do one, if Selena wants all five seats to be up for election, we can appoint her to seat one, and then her seat would also be vacant, and then every seat would be up for election in a march, am I correct on that?
You're correct, but she would have to make a decision to resign effective immediately.
Now, would she, would she have to resign if we decided to appoint her? Because she could say no to the appointment.
She can't fill two seats, so.
It won't become effective as soon as we appoint her to another seat, that means she's given up the other seat. I don't think, dual office holding prohibits that, and I'm pretty sure the law is, if you have an office and you get appointed to a new office, you're automatically kicked out of that old office, correct?
My advice is she needs to resign prior to that happening, she cannot fill both seats, she cannot stay in her current seat and have you all appoint her to group one, which is the now vacated seat.
But how could she be still in seat three if the appointing her to seat one negates her seat three?
There is not.
I'm pretty sure the law is clear, but that's me, I mean, your job is, you know better.
My advice to her is that for that to be an option, she needs to resign, she would need to resign, she would need to accept that, and that would need to be an affirmative thing that she does here tonight, effective immediately prior to such an appointment taking place.
Can I do that with a motion on the floor?
There is a motion on the floor, but.
No, I'm asking if there is a motion.
You would need to open your seat, correct?
Any other thoughts? The two-step process that we're talking about, if I understand it correctly?
I don't think it has to... I mean, I'm sorry, I may be overstepping my bounds, but I don't think it has to be a two-step process. I think if you appoint someone to a spot and they have another office, that other office is automatically vacated under Florida law. So the resigning doesn't have to happen. It occurs by law, is my understanding. But you know what? This is something to bring up, you know, after a little bit of research, because this is just my understanding of the way it works, because I have come across this issue in my professional practice. And given it was 10 years ago, maybe the law changed from 10 years ago, but my understanding is if you have an office and you accept another office, that prior office is gone and you're in the new office.
Okay.
So...
The issue is that you're trying to move her to a seat. She needs to be okay with that. That's the issue.
Right. No, she has to accept it, but I don't see...
The other acceptance is resigning the current seat and then being put into... Being appointed by the remainder of the council into that group one open seat.
So why couldn't I make a motion to appoint her to seat one? It's a second and then the majority agrees to it and then she's out of seat three, right? I mean, that's my understanding of the way it works.
Richard, I know there was those conversations with the other attorney. The other attorney has met with Mitty and this is his advice, along with Mitty's. I know we had a different conversation the other day. That's what I went over there to talk to Mitty about, to inform her of that. And she had another conversation with Keith today. And this is what they concluded.
So, Selena, you have my support if you want to move forward.
Mine, too.
So then you're asking me to resign from my seat, from seat three, to be appointed to seat four?
To seat one.
To seat one.
They're not... I don't... I wouldn't say that they're asking you. It is your decision. Because making that decision to resign, to be appointed to that, is you giving up your seat and you will have to run election this time. You do not have to make that decision until you decide to run for mayor, which could be put off to 10 days prior to qualifying, which is... Would be November 21st. So that decision to run for mayor doesn't have to be made until then. If the decision's made tonight to go into that other seat, then that... Your seat can be put up for somebody to run for. If you wait until the 21st, then that would be a vacant seat and would have to be appointed after the election. But it's your choice.
Right. And I agree that... And I said it last month, is that I think the residents should choose who's up here. I don't think we should go with appointments. But that's where it's a little tricky in that sense, which is why I brought up the other scenario prior to this passing, just for that purpose.
So where are we then in this process?
I mean, do you need time, Selena? I mean...
It's not an Agenda Item. So it's not like...
It's not an Agenda Item, but we could set a special meeting to consider this, can't we?
Well, I think because of qualifying and the appointment and if I do resign to run, it's in next week, anyway. I mean, it's a short time.
Yeah, I think the difficulty is the publication requirements. The legal ad goes out tomorrow morning to get the one publication in the Spanish paper.
For the advertisement for the elections.
We're bumping up here against the beginning of qualifying. And there's... We have to publish two ads. Two ads in the Palm Beach Post for 30 days, so we're, you know, a week and a half in.
Right.
Could you please clarify what's going on? It's difficult to hear.
How about if... Mitty, why don't you kind of summarize what we're talking about here?
So the Agenda Item R9, there was just an appointment of the vice mayor into the mayor's vacant seat. What's being... That's correct. That's been voted on and that is confirmed. What's being discussed now is that there is another option for Councilwoman Samios, if the desire of the council, which has been discussed at previous meetings and is being discussed again here tonight, if there's a desire to have as many seats as possible put before the voters at this upcoming election, there is an option on the table that she could resign her seat now with the vacancy of the vice mayor's seat. She could resign her seat tonight and be appointed into group one, which is the vice mayor's vacant seat, because he's now the mayor, to open her seat, her current group seat, for the election that's upcoming, to get as many seats as has been said, up for the voters. No, she would not be vice mayor. She would just be into group one, into that seat.
Interesting point, because seat one is the vice mayor's seat.
And the... Your legal counsel's position is that the vice mayor title is with the person, not with the group seat. The group is just how your code and your charter have the seats, for staggering of the seats.
So the benefit there is that we'd wind up with the voters being able to decide who sits up here, as opposed to winding up with one appointment that would take place after the March election. Is that right?
That's correct. If Councilwoman Samios, as she said, she is intending to run for mayor, if she resigns to run 10 days before the beginning of the qualifying period, that seat does not technically... Her current seat does not technically become vacant until the election day. So that seat would not be able to be filled by the council if it is the council's pleasure to fill that seat until after the election. If she does the alternative and resigns effective immediately, she would open her seat now to be put on the ballot and then she could be appointed into group one seat so that she remains on the council.
And again, that allows the voters to then vote in everybody up here.
Right.
I think it is your decision.
Well, sure, because that also requires me to resign immediately, effective immediately. And that's why I think where Councilman Valentes was saying, as far as an appointment, then there wasn't need for resignation until the appointment was made and then resigning from the other seat.
Well, couldn't we appoint her immediately if she resigns tonight?
Yes.
Yes, we can do that.
Absolutely.
Indeed. I think that's the basic idea, is to, again, to allow the voters to decide who sits up here. And otherwise, we'd wind up with one appointment come March.
So what do you need from me, Mitty?
If your intent is to resign effective immediately, I would need you to state that. You would then step down off the dais for a brief moment and then, as your code allows the council, the remainder of the council, the three sitting up here, could reappoint you back into that seat by resolution. Although I... The resolution number would be 2024-26. That would be the next number that's available and that appointment could be done as soon as that resignation is made.
Then, as far as my time on the dais, that all stays intact, everything that I've done up to this point?
Yeah, it's essentially contemporaneous. You would step off just for a brief moment and then with the appointment, you would come right back.
Okay. So nothing else changes internally?
And you would be sworn and we still need to swear the vice mayor and before the meeting ends as well. So, excuse me, the new mayor. But we would swear you in at that time as well.
Okay. All right. Then I make a... Then I will resign effective immediately.
Okay.
And...
Ma'am, just for one second. And now would be the time for any motions.
And after that, I'd make a motion to appoint Selena Samios to seat number one that is currently vacant.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second.
And just a clarification on the motion. That would be the resolution number that would...
Oh, resolution, I'm sorry, 2024-26.
Thank you. Would effectuate that action.
Okay. I don't know if this is a public comment subject or not.
No, sir, you have a motion. This... You can proceed. This was not an Agenda Item. You can proceed.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Put it to a vote. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Okay, that motion carries.
No opposed? Nobody's opposed? Carries unanimously. So...
And if we can have Councilwoman Samios come back to the dais and then I'll ask the clerk to officiate the oaths for both the mayor.
Good job. Is that all seats for the election in March?
It does, yes. All five seats will be open. All five will be on the ballot.
So if we could just have the ceremonial portion of this and we need the oath administered for both the new mayor and also for Councilwoman Samios, who is now sitting in group one.
You will please raise your right hand. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Jeff Amara.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Protect and defend?
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government?
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida?
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified?
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office?
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state?
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well?
And that I will well.
And faithfully?
And faithfully.
Perform the duties?
Perform the duties.
Of mayor for the village of Royal Palm Beach?
Of mayor for the village of Royal Palm Beach.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. And repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Selena Samios.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Protect and defend?
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government?
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida. That I am duly qualified?
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office?
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state?
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well?
And that I will well.
And faithfully?
And faithfully.
Perform the duties of?
Perform the duties of?